It's October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I want to thank you all for being here. We appreciate it, and we have a number of items to discuss on the agenda. For those of you who are here for the first time, I want to thank you for coming and tell you a little bit about our procedure. We start out with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we have a moment of silence in respect for those who wish to share their feelings. And then we have certain agenda announcements, and then we move into presentations. Tonight, we have one presentation, and that will be made by Commissioner Glassman, Dr. Holness, Dr. Jeff Holness, who is a school board member who was supposed to make a presentation tonight, could not attend tonight because his school board meeting is running late. So he will come back, and the presentation number two that's on the agenda has been removed, and we'll hear it at another time. Are we all settled?
Um, City Manager.
Yes, Mr. City Manager.
Hi, Mayor. I wanted to request a deferral for an item.
Sure. Is it on the consent agenda, or is it a?
No, it's actually.
Which item is that?
I believe it's.
Is that with regard to you?
Yes.
Okay.
R six.
R six, okay. So we will defer R six.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to discuss that, actually. I'm hearing this, and I.
All right, why don't we wait till we get to the agenda announcements when we do make changes to the agenda, okay?
Thank you.
So let us begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight, we have two star performers. We have L. Holler and Dean Holler, who is from the fifth grade of Harbordale and the second grade of Harbordale, who are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Harbordale, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the mighty states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, thank you. Okay. I want to thank L. and Dean Holler. Thank you so much. Thank you for, I want to thank your parents for allowing you to come here tonight. And thank you, Zoe, for bringing them here on behalf of the city of Fort Lauderdale. So at this point, at this point, I'd like to invite everyone to share in a moment of silence with the rest of the commission. Okay, thank you. So we have a couple of agenda announcements. CR six, page four of the CAM was revised. M two, the exhibit five was revised. M four, exhibits four and five were revised. CR six, page four of the CAM was revised. M two, exhibit five was revised. M four, exhibit four and exhibit five were revised. R seven, the seventh whereas clause on page two in section one on page three of the resolution was revised. And as we know, presentation one was removed from the agenda because Dr. Holness could not be here tonight. And presentation two is also removed from the agenda, and that will be presented on November seventh of two thousand and twenty-three. Commissioner Glassman, you want to make a comment? Oh, I thought you did. And the city manager wanted to remove, which item was it again?
R six.
R six.
To defer to a later meeting.
To defer to a later.
And I would like to discuss that. Thank you.
Okay, that's why I asked if you had something.
Well, yeah, but we.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We already talked about that.
Okay.
Nothing additional.
Okay. You wanted to discuss something?
Oh, no, are we discussing that? You said when we came to it, we were going to discuss it.
Well, it's being deferred now. I'm sorry? Okay, in a moment. All right, so when we get to that, we'll address that.
I could do it either now or whenever you want. It's up to you. It's R six, but whatever you'd like.
Well, we're approving the agenda, and we're approving the agenda. So when we approve the agenda in the minutes, that will be added as an amendment to the agenda. So now would be the time to best discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
But before you do that, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, here.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Here.
Mayor Trentaus?
Here.
So we have full attendance. Commissioners Glassman.
Yes, thank you. So I just heard that we're being asked to defer R six.
Yes.
Okay, so according to the published agenda, that says city manager annual performance review. I'd like to know why we are being asked to defer that.
Sure, there was a request from one of the commissioners that they would like to have a one-on-one prior to presenting this item. So I wanted to afford that opportunity.
Well, with all due respect, I know that you and I meet regularly. It's on our calendar. I think every commissioner hopefully meets with you on a regular basis. This is a published agenda item to talk about your annual performance review. If my notes are correct, your annual was July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three?
Yes, it was.
Typically, we do performance review of our charter officers on the anniversary of their appointment date. So we're already three months past the time of when we should be doing your performance review. I understand when I read the backup of this and did discuss it with folks in my district, I do understand why it was held for a little while. There were a lot of things that were in motion, like all of our union contracts, police, fire. There was a lot of moving parts, plus it was summer. We don't meet most of July and August, so this is the time. I, with all due respect, again, if one of my colleagues needs to meet with you, that's great. But I feel that we are obligated to move forward with the annual performance review. I know that I am. I don't know why we would defer this. I would just say that I think that we should be moving forward with this agenda item.
Okay, could I, can I have a word, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay.
Wait, are your comments concluded? Yes, for now, thank you.
Okay, procedurally, I just want to know, does this help, Mr. City Attorney? If I made a motion to defer this, and then could we discuss whether we're going to, I mean, I, is it, can I make a motion so we could talk about this? We could talk about it. We don't need a motion. You can talk about it. Go ahead. What would you like to say?
Okay, I think, first of all, I want to thank the city manager for deferring this. I don't know if there's anybody else that requested it, but I did request to defer this. We are not ready to do an evaluation with him. We have done this, with all due respect, David, Mr. City Clerk. We went ahead and did a sort of a casual performance evaluation, but. Greg, let's talk for a few minutes, okay? And relax, it's not anything to do with your performance per se, but the process. We're going to talk about the process. So you're not in the crosshairs. We're not attacking or anything. It's the process that I have a problem with. There's an organization, it's called ICMA, is that correct?
Yes, that's the International City County Managers Association.
Okay, International City Manager has a protocol, and they have, there's a process they go through, matrices they use to evaluate. There's certain standardizations that they go through, and they're one of several people, but there is a process to go through. This was put forth on the agenda as a, you know, Greg, he stated, you stated everything you accomplished, and oh, here, let's go ahead and just, you know, without any criteria. We need to do a few things, in my opinion, and I'm going to open up to my colleagues here to really, to do an evaluation. It should be fair, and I think we do that, again, I'm not, it's not a gotcha, it's not going to catch you. I told you I was going to do this ahead of time. So this is something that you knew. It's not blindsideing you, and I think that you agree that we have to do this. The process has to be straightforward. We have to have, number one, individual members doing the evaluating. Then we bring them back as a group. We evaluate you as a body. We have to do things such as setting goals, see, you know, what, if the goals have been accomplished, some standardization, have we met the goals? I mean, it goes on and on. There's a whole bunch of things. I have, I haven't gone through everything, but I have a gist of what goes through here. Our process is, oh, we like you, Greg, you did good, and I think you did well, and I think you didn't do too bad. There's nothing concrete, there's no matrix. I know you had mentioned that when we did this with David. This is the opportunity to go ahead and set a precedent, to do it professionally, to have a matrix, to have something that we guide. And this is, we need to have, we need to do this professionally, guys. You do this when you evaluate the people below you. We, as a body, should take the same steps, and I think that we should, we should come up with a process how we're going to evaluate you. I'm not saying it's good or bad, and.
Well, Commissioner Sturman, do you think between now and maybe the next meeting, you might have that opportunity to do that performance evaluation?
No, I've got one better for you. Let's talk how we want to do. I think we should do this, bring them up next meeting, but let's see. Maybe in conference, we should come, it might, I don't want to have two minutes. I want to do this next meeting. So we should come up with how we're going to do this. What, we're going to judge you by the goals that were set, you know, whether, you know, the things were achieved, you know. The, I have a list of some of the things here, but there's, there's a matrix by which we should be judging you, it should be professional.
Would you like to share that with us?
Well, I mean, I have, I figured we'd talk about that. Let me open it up to, I mean, goals, expectations, have you, your performance, you know, the budget, then, I mean, several. But I think the ICMA does have a form that they use, and we could go by that, come through here and standardize, and each one of us fill that out, and when we come here, then we bring that as an objective thing. Get a motion out of this. Don't have anything that's emotional.
Do you want to share that with us? Why don't you, after the meeting, why don't you have your office?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Give it to the clerk?
I'd love to.
Give it to the clerk, and then let the clerk give it to all of us.
And we do that, and then we bring that back, and then we evaluate, bring it back as a body, and then we come to a conclusion that the rest of us, I think that's, that. No, let me tell you something, Mr. City Manager. If you do that, and you do well, and you, if you do it with flying, it's going to give it more credibility to, to whatever we decide. It's the right thing to do. It's the right process, I think. And don't take this as for or against your performance. That has nothing to do with your performance. It's the process that I have a problem with, and I just want to.
Okay, so if the city manager is amenable to that, which I believe he is.
Let's do it.
If you would share that with us.
I'd be happy to.
I personally have been evaluating the city managers since the day he was hired, so I don't, I don't know if I will in any way benefit from that, but everyone, but other people on the commission may benefit.
But we should standardize the way we're doing it as a group.
And that's fine.
You're right.
If I may, to provide equity, I like to make sure that all charter officers also have a matrix. Had I known that there was going to be a matrix, I would have made sure that I would have formatted it to that matrix. So it's the first time I hear. I'm amenable to that, but I also like to request that all charter officers also have the same format.
Correct, and Greg and I, we spoke about that too.
To that equity.
Yeah, Greg, you mentioned that, and I agree with that.
That's fair. So.
Mayor?
Wait, wait, hold on a second.
Okay.
So there has to be one proviso to that, and that is, obviously, if the review was supposed to have been done in July, any decision that we make, and, you know, God willing, we will, we will consider not just retention of the city manager, but also a raise, as he would be entitled to, that it would be retroactive from his, from the July date, correct?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, all righty. Yes, Mr. Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I did want to make note, and I don't have any problem with that matrix. It's just that, I guess I've been serving for almost six years. For any of the charter officers, we've never used any kind of matrix like that. In fact, when Lee Feldman was the city manager, I believe he was also serving as the president of this organization that Commissioner Sturman is mentioning. And as the president of that organization, he never even introduced a matrix to be evaluated by.
It's okay, well.
Which is funny, because his organization is the one that promotes this.
That was exactly my point, and he was our city manager, and he never brought the matrix to our attention. I'm okay with this. I just found it a kind of unusual, because it's.
It's okay.
But I'm fine.
I think, are you okay with this, Vice Mayor? Does this make sense to you?
Um, yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wasn't even aware. I knew that your anniversary was coming up, but I didn't know that there was a process where we had missed the deadline to review and give the evaluation. So tonight, with it being on the agenda, I think it is an opportunity to, you know, do it fairly, and that way we have a guideline, and we can go from there. But I think it's, I think it's appropriate that we implement something of this manner.
And I think it's also good, because for next year, we have a base from which to compare.
Exactly, exactly, and being, I use this term, being less than a year old, brand new with this, and going through the process monthly, getting acclimated. I wouldn't say I wasn't evaluating, you were saying that you were evaluating monthly, but you've been here, you're used to the process. So that gives me an opportunity.
Are you saying I'm old?
You can speak for yourself. But being able to be a part of the process and do it where it represents fairly, that's what I want to do.
All right, and we're agreeing to do this with all charter officers?
I agree.
Yep, yep. And I want to thank you, City Manager, for being proactive with this and adding to the integrity of the office. I thank you.
Commissioner Herbst, do you want to add to this conversation?
Yes, I would. So in all my many years as a charter officer, I always made a point of reaching out to the elected officials at least a month in advance so that I could have conversations with them. Not all the elected officials wanted or needed to have that conversation, but I made myself available so that we could review my performance. I shared that with the city manager, that I was actually caught by surprise that this was on the agenda. I didn't know it was going to be here. We have not had a chance to talk about his performance on an annual basis. Certainly, we do meet and discuss things on a, on a regular basis, but that's usually more what I would call operational in nature. That's not designed to evaluate his performance against any expectations or goals or criteria that I may have in my mind. Those are simply things that need to get done, and we're checking progress on them. So I had also asked him to consider deferring this till we had an opportunity to speak about that. I think Commissioner Sturman's proposal of using the ICMA template is a good one. And I also like the city manager's idea about having a formal process for the other charter officers. It's one that I think would be very valuable. One of the things I would ask, and I'm not sure who would do this, is to see if we can find some kind of a format for doing that. I know we have one for the ICMA, and that kind of makes it easier. I'll throw this to you, D. Wayne. Is there anything comparable within the city attorney universe?
The universe.
I would have to take a look into those organizations to see if they do have one. I'm not personally aware of that.
All right, so I would ask then each of you, Mr. Auditor, Mr. Clerk, you know, you have professional organizations. Please look into those and see if there is some promulgated standards by which we can evaluate your performance. I think the city manager brings up a good point. He didn't know that this was going to be the yardstick by which he'd be measured. But it is sort of the industry standard, if you will, for city managers, so I don't think it's outside the realm of reasonable. But I do think that we ought to have criteria for all of our charter officers. And so if we don't have them now, let's find out what they are. So again, I ask all of you to kind of be proactive and bring something back to us. And then, yes, if, Commissioner Sturman, you would make that available to us, at least it gives me a starting point for the conversation, because I think it's a useful tool to understand. I know when I used to evaluate my staff, I developed my own criteria, because they're not part of the city manager's hierarchy. So therefore, the standards that are used by HR to evaluate every other individual that works in the city don't necessarily apply to the charter officer's staff. So I made up my own template, my own tool that I use to evaluate my staff. But I do think it's important to have some standardized criteria, so that we're all scoring you in somewhat the same way. I don't think, to Commissioner Sturman's comment previously, that this, any charter officer's review should be a popularity contest about whether we like you or whether we don't like you. It should be tied to some sort of expectations, and I think the ICMA ones will probably give us a good guideline to start with. And so I encourage you then to reach out, and let's get some time on my calendar. I'd like to have some time to review that template, so as quickly as you could get that all to us, Commissioner Sturman, I would appreciate it. And then, yes, I'd love to sit down and have that conversation, and then I think we can bring this forward at the next meeting and move forward with it. So thank you.
I just wanted to do a shout out to Renee, Jerry, my staff. Look what I found it. Look what they put in my packet. I have it right here. Okay, so I will get this to you. Apparently, you guys are awesome. You already gave, you printed out and did the research for me, so I'll make this available.
What is that?
This is, this is it. This is the evaluation.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, let's move along. So we'll defer that. So do I hear a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, and the minutes and the agenda as amended have now been approved. Presentation number one, Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
He's presenting a proclamation regarding Cybersecurity Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mayor. So everyone, there's a camera under your seat. Just kidding. Okay, this is a proclamation from the office of the mayor, City of Fort Lauderdale. Proclamation in recognition of Cybersecurity Awareness Month, October, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas, the digital age has ushered in unprecedented benefits for our society, revolutionizing the way we communicate, work, learn, and play, while also introducing security challenges. And whereas, since two thousand and four, the President of the United States and Congress have declared the month of October to be Cybersecurity Awareness Month, a dedicated period for the public and private sectors to collaborate in raising awareness about the significance of cybersecurity. And whereas, the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, CISA, has launched the Secure Our World Our World Cybersecurity Awareness Campaign for 2023, encouraging everyone to take action each day to protect themselves when online or using connected devices. And whereas, the City of Fort Lauderdale acknowledges its vital role in safeguarding its residents, business owners, and visitors from cyber threats that could seriously impact individual and collective privacy, prosperity, and growth of our community. And whereas, maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us play a critical role. And whereas, all neighbors are strongly encouraged to visit the CISA website to further their knowledge on proactive measures, including enabling multi-factor authentication, utilizing strong passwords, identifying, reporting phishing attempts, and keeping software up to date. And whereas, the City of Fort Lauderdale recognizes the invaluable contributions of our Information Technology Services Department in securing the Fort Lauderdale community, and commends them for their dedicated efforts. Now, therefore, we, as city commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Cybersecurity Awareness Month in the City of Fort Lauderdale, dated this, the 17th day of October 2023, and signed by our mayor, the Honorable Dean J. Trentalis. Thank you. And I, thank you. And Ashley, who am I supposed to have up here with me?
Tamika McKay.
Tamika, thank you. I should have called you up earlier, and I apologize for that. Tamika, would you like to say a few words?
Actually, I would.
From IT, I had a feeling, thank you.
Is Agent Paul Aide here as well? Aide, yeah, could you please come up?
Yes. Thank you for this opportunity, Tamika McKay, Chief Information Officer of the City of Fort Lauderdale. I do want to just talk about how extremely excited I am about the endless possibilities of technology to improve the quality of life.
Please don't introduce AI into this mission.
We won't do that today.
As bad enough as it is.
I do want to take a moment, though, and acknowledge the IT staff joining me today. They have on their blue T-shirts. If you are from the Information Technology Department, would you kindly stand? This team has formed tremendously, more than expected in the last six months, through building evacuations, flood, data center relocations, and literally redesigning our entire network infrastructure in a matter of days, all while not having a place to work themselves. So just want to give a shout out to the amazing team that I have behind me. I do want to introduce one of our special guests, Frida the Fish. Frida the Fish is going to come out and pass out some items to help remind you all that we must fight the fish. Do not click on links that are suspicious, or that you do not know. Frida is joined by Wayne Gooden, who's her handler, and the theme for this month is "Secure Our World." Cybersecurity is a shared responsibility. It's not just for IT. Each one of us has a role, and I just want to say one thing to help you understand that. Think of your home. If you spent thousands of dollars on a very fancy security system, you have bolted doors and locks, but then you leave the back window open, you've now just allowed an opportunity for an intruder to come in. So it is very important that we all understand that cybersecurity is a shared responsibility. If you could just repeat after me, "Do your part, be cyber smart." Can you say that? Do your part, be cyber smart. Thank you. Now, our second guest, should we do our photo op, or should we do the, okay, before I introduce special? Yes.
Paul, do you want to say a few words?
I'm going to introduce him in a moment, he does have a presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Frida, would you mind making your way over here?
One good thing, that can't fit through my back window. Who's in there?
So we have the honor today to have a special guest with us, Senior Special Paul, Special Agent Paul Aide of the United States Secret Service. Here, he will share some valuable information on cyber crimes. And Paul Aide, Senior Special Aide, has been employed with the United States Secret Service for 21 years. He's currently assigned to the Miami Field Office, and investigates network intrusion breaches to include business email compromises, ransomware attacks, cryptocurrency attacks, and cloud-based compromises. Special Agent Aide also provides network security protection for presidential and vice presidential visits. Please join me in welcoming Special Agent Aide to the podium.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. McKay, for that nice introduction there. Once again, Paul Aide from the Secret Service. Couple things real quick here. Number one, if I'm talking kind of fast, I apologize in advance, because my presentation normally goes about 45 minutes, and I'm going to squeeze it into about 10 minutes here. I'm going to give you guys the good nuggets of it right here. Second of all, thank you for inviting me to speak during Cybersecurity Awareness Month, you know, very important month, it's often forgotten, but, you know, quite important. I love the fish, where's the fish at? The fish is swimming, all right. You got to put it back in the water, it can't be out for too long. Also, I would like to recognize Mr. Brad Jenkins, who is in the back here. He is a 22-year veteran with the Fort Lauderdale Police Department, who has recently retired, and he has come over to the dark side of the force, and is with the Secret Service now as a network intrusion forensic analyst. So everyone, please drumming a round of applause for Mr. Jenkins, 22 years of service with the City of Fort Lauderdale. All right, so I've got 6:39, I got to like 6:49. If I go over, someone just, you know, starts throwing something at me, you know, like, make sure it's not hurting, like a, like a, you know, make sure, yeah, the fish, the fish can come out and tell me to stop. All right, so here we go. This is a bit about me, you've already heard a bit about me. A lot of you are probably wondering, why is the Secret Service up here talking about cybersecurity? Because we all know that the Secret Service, all they do is have little funny things in their ears and protect the president, that's all they do. It's actually not true. I kind of cut down my timeline here, but we started in the 1800s, 1865, our sole mission was combating counterfeit money. Nobody was protecting the president. And then we had three presidents that were assassinated in 36-year period of time. In 1901, Congress said, timeout, let's get somebody to protect the president, at least on a temporary basis. Secret Service, which was doing a great job protecting, you know, arresting counterfeiters, our job was then to protect the president as well, and that later included the vice president, former presidents, et cetera. We continued our dual-mission investigations and protection, and in 1984, Congress also gave us the authority to investigate credit card theft, credit card theft, and cyber crimes as well, too. So that's a long runabout story of why I'm here. So probably the past, you know, 40-some years, we've been investigating cyber crimes, which are just getting more and more prevalent nowadays. All right, we'll get through that there. What law enforcement agencies investigate cyber crimes? Probably the two main ones, US Secret Service and the FBI. You've got Homeland Security, which is kind of dabbling, and police departments. Now, police departments typically do not do a lot of cyber, you know, cyber crimes. Fort Lauderdale is one of the exceptions, Miami-Dade are one of the exceptions, they actually, you know, dedicate a fair amount of detectives, like Mr. Jenkins, to combating cyber crimes. Your average police department, small police departments, one detective is investigating murders, rapes, and robberies, and cyber crimes. So it's hard to specialize in that. But Fort Lauderdale, you know, you guys, about three detectives, I think, that do it, you know, full-time, which is much, much more than the average police department does. All right, what kind of cyber crimes do we see in the Secret Service? So ransomware is way up there at the top. Brad and I just got back from ransomware in Miami just an hour ago. Business email compromise, which I'm going to talk about today, I'd love to talk about all of these, but I do not have enough time. Let's see how we're doing on time. I'm actually got eight minutes, all right. DDoS attacks, cryptojacking, which is becoming more and more prevalent, this is, you know, stealing your cryptocurrency through scams, et cetera, that's starting to get quite prevalent. So I'm going, I do not have enough time to talk about ransomware, I would love to come back and speak about this at another time. I have a good presentation where I actually infect a computer with ransomware, but what I really want to talk about is business email compromises, which are probably, here, let me back up here. This is probably the most damaging cyber attack to date, right here. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but business email compromise, BEC, basically kind of sums up, you know, the name itself kind of says everything. You've got two businesses that are in communication via email, bad guy hacks into either one of those emails, possibly through a phishing email, boom, right here, and then redirects the payment to the bad guy's bank account. In a nutshell, that's what this says right here. And it's a relatively low-tech attack, however, the amount of cost you'll see in a moment is just staggering right here. There is probably five or six or seven, you know, BECs, the common ones, we'll talk about the real estate BEC, so anybody getting ready to buy a house, please perk up when I talk about this here, and any business owners as well, too. So typically, real estate BECs and false invoice, that's kind of what we see a lot. There are some other variations, and they're very similar. All right, let's talk about a real estate BEC. So if you're getting ready to buy a house, I've seen people just lose their whole nest egg due to this, and it's very heartbreaking. So you've got a home buyer that, I'm going to face this way here, you've got a home buyer that's getting near closing the purchase on their house, and they're in email correspondence with your title company. Anybody that's bought a house knows this, you're emailing your title company, probably your realtor, and your title company says, hey, at a certain point, you're going to have to give us a bunch of money to close, right? This is money that you probably saved over, if you're a first-time home buyer, saved a lot of money. So on the left is our home buyer, on the right is the title company, it's a giant title company here. And so then, an attacker compromises either the home buyer's email or the title company. And what that means is the bad guy's able to guess your password, and log in, and view all your emails, and see that a purchase is coming, a wire transfer is imminent, because we typically do wire transfers when we close on houses. Here's our hacker, he hacks into either one of the networks, the attacker sends a fake email directing the home buyer to send, you know, your closing payment to some other bank account. Hey, this is, it'd be a fake email saying, hey, this is the title company, our bank account is changed, please send it to this new bank account, i.e. a bad guy account. So that happens, and then, you know, the home buyer is going to send their money, the title company's not going to get the money, home buyer is going to, you know, lose the money, and this money will quickly make its way overseas, and it's horrible for everybody. I've seen people, you know, lose their life savings, you know, especially first-time home buyers. So we'll talk more about prevention strategy at the end here. Also, if you're a business owner right here, so this is the false invoice, business email compromise, very similar to the one they just described, you've got company A and company B that are in email communication, company A is going to send a wire transfer to company B, all right? Hacker can hack either one of the networks, either one of the emails, and read the email and see that there's a wire transfer coming up imminently. The hacker then sends a fake email to company A and says, look, this is company B, our bank account is changed, please kindly wire transfer, you know, your $4 million that you were going to send to my new bank account. And the money's gone. So this is, you know, probably the most damaging cyber attack that we see to date. Ransomware is up there as well, too. BECs, the amount of money you can see right here, $45 to $50 billion stolen in just probably the last seven or eight years. And it's constantly kind of evolving here, but just a ton of money is stolen. Very complex network hackers are sending phishing emails, and, you know, blasting them out to a lot of people, and a lot of times, these phishing emails are along the lines, and they're getting better and better. It's like, hey, this is Microsoft, there's a problem with your account, please put in your email and your password. And, you know, these pop-ups come up, you just want them to go away, especially if you've got work, and you're like, let's say it pops up 10 times, after the 10th time, you're like, all right, I'm just going to put my email and password in there, it goes away. Well, it's not Microsoft getting your email and password, it's the bad guy, and then he can just go to like outlook.com and log into your email, if you're using, you know, Microsoft, or Yahoo, or Gmail, the same thing. A lot of the bad guys are typically out of Western Africa, typically, you know, Lagos, Nigeria. They have a complex network of money mules that operate in the United States, and these are, you know, typically romance scam victims. I've got two minutes left here, oh, wow. I'm going to rush through this. All right, so the money is kept inside the United States, and then quickly moves out of the US, moves from bank to bank in the US, and then typically goes overseas. And that's how the bad guys get their, get their money. So just kind of wrapping up right here, you want to be, want to be very careful whenever you receive an email, it's, you know, particularly if it's changing the bank account, super red flag right there, you want to go ahead and call the person, call the person you're dealing with from a known phone number, not, you've got an email saying, hey, my bank account's changed, and my phone number's changed, call me on my new number, you could be talking to the bad guy. So if possible, go in person to the person, go in person to the person you're sending the wire transfer, or call them from a known number. Also, be careful, watch the email closely, and take a look at the domain. Sometimes you'll see the domain is changed, I'm going to fast forward here, because I think I'm just about out of time. I'm rushing, like I said, here, multi-factor authentication, I think Tamika mentioned, or someone mentioned before, very, or Commissioner, very, very important. And you can see, for example, here's an example of a domain that has been spoofed. So you've got, you've got john@abccorp.com, and john@abcc0rp.com. Bad guys will create new domains, and it's going to go to the bad guy, not to the intended user. So take a look at that, they can be difficult to see, but, you know, like I say, confirm your wire transfers, or ACH, before you just, you know, send off a fair amount of money. Have a response plan, this is, you know, if you're a business, have a response plan, because, you know, time is critical. There's about 72 hours that law enforcement can help you get the money back. After that, it is, you know, just about gone. And I think I got it in 10 minutes. Everyone, please, give me a round of applause for 10 minutes, on the dot, on the dot. It doesn't get any better than that, all right. All right, I think I'm done.
Well, first of all, thank you very, very much for this presentation. It helps alert everybody in the community as to the villains out there. And again, thank you for your service to our country, we really appreciate all that you do. And please make sure I get through TSA Pre-Check next time at the airport.
I'll make a call right now.
Could you make a mental note of that, please? Thank you, I appreciate that. Any questions of our friends here in the Secret Service? Mr. Aide?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Okay, that completes our presentations tonight. At this point, we will now go through the consent agenda. I will ask each member of the commission if they have a consent agenda item which they'd like to pull, and if they do so, then we will, we will discuss and vote on that separately. If there is an item that you're here for tonight that has not been pulled, that you do want to discuss separately, I will invite you to do so before we vote, and come here and speak at the podium. So Commissioner Herbst, do you have any items you'd like to pull?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Commissioner Glassman?
None, thank you.
And Commissioner Sturman?
CR4.
CR4. Okay, so, what are you giving me? CR3, okay. Except for, except for CR4, I know there's some people who've signed up for CR3, but I don't think it's controversial, so you don't really want us to, right, okay. So CR4, okay, and I have none that I'd like to pull. So except for CR4, do I hear a motion to approve all the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and all those consent agenda items are now approved, and we're going to get a note through trucks on 18th Street, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, thank you, Ben Rogers, our neighborhood, thank you, Alex, good night. Okay, CR4, Commissioner Sturman?
Okay, before I begin, I intend to vote yes on this, by the way, but I'm bringing it up more for discussion purposes. And the reason for that is, you know, this year was a tough year for a lot of our And the reason for that is, um, you know, this year was a tough year for a lot of our nonprofits. We cut a lot of money out of some very good programs, and, um, I know that, um, we've had a commitment to Go Riverwalk Magazine, they do a very good job. Uh, Riverwalk does a very good job in our community, promoting our community. But, um, I know, uh, in years past, uh, we did have a private entity that was able to do this. I think they actually did it as a profit. So my, what I, I'm using this as an opportunity, I would urge, um, I know that we have a magazine ourselves, uh, City Manager, and we're, we spoke about trying to do that, we, we have a budget for that, but we're trying to do that so the advertising will cover it. Um, I would urge, um, uh, the Riverwalk Trust, if, if they could, um, I mean, with advertising, I, in the past, they had covered the cost of that. I mean, there's things in Pam's district that we've had to cut arts, we've cut, uh, you know, educational programs, we've cut. I would love to, um, get to, or urge that if Riverwalk could go ahead and make that at least cost-neutral with advertising dollars in the future. So that, that was, if anybody else wants to weigh in, that was my thought.
Anyone have any comments with regard to CR4?
If I could add, um, Ms. Jeanne Ellis is here, that she can answer any questions, but, um, the overall cost of the magazine, I believe it's, um, greater than 200,000 a year? 300,000 a year. So this is a city's contribution, um, for economic development support for, um, the Riverwalk businesses. Unlike the FTL Connect, which was an inaugural magazine this year, um, FTL Connect goes to every single home so that individuals can see progress of the city. This one's more focused on, um, attracting, um, individuals to visit Riverwalk and the businesses nearby.
I think it's a great magazine, and when I go to other cities, I take it with me, it's a selling tool. You, you highlight so much of what's good in our downtown and, and, uh, what makes our community so attractive, so, um, I would definitely support it. So do I hear a motion to approve the item?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a City of Fort Lauderdale fiscal year 2024 not-for-profit service agreement with Riverwalk Fort Lauderdale Inc., authorizing execution of the not-for-profit service agreement and providing separability and effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
No.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and the item's approved. M1, motion approving an event agreement and request for extended road closures beyond 10 a.m. on the Barrier Island for the 2024 Fort Lauderdale Marathon, Half Marathon, and Fort Lauderdale 5K. Is this the race you're gonna be leading, Commissioner?
I will be winning this year, actually, Mayor.
That sounds like a challenge.
I think you don't. Yeah, so.
Uh, is, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
To approve?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We move the seconded, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that item's approved. M2, motion approving a design-build agreement for the Northeast 25th Avenue 24-inch force main replacement and the Northeast 38th Street 42-inch force main, Northeast 19th Avenue 24-inch force main replacement projects, David Mancini and Sons, Inc.
Mayor, I have a question, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Well, can we introduce, since we're trying to follow Robert's rules?
I understand.
Uh, do I hear a motion to approve?
Okay, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We move the seconded, now discussion.
Thank you. We just received late today a revised, uh, agreement. I have, I'll be honest with you, I have not had a chance to look at it, we just got it. I got a hard copy here, we've been working all day, I don't know how I'm expected to read this, but can someone at least tell me what the changes were from what we did read in, uh, our original agenda?
Mr. Dodd, are you here in the audience?
Actually, I'm gonna ask if, um, Susan or Glenn can come up and talk about what those updates or changes are.
Okay. Well, I, 'cause I hate to delay this, this is, you know...
No, I understand, I just don't understand why we can't get the correct backup, and that makes it so much easier, that's all.
Okay, so let's see how we can answer your question.
It's hard for me to read something when I don't have the time to read it.
Okay, the gentleman's here, what questions do you have?
Thank you. I'd like to know what the changes are from what we had in our backup.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Um, the item before you, the changes are very minor and non-substantive, just basically explaining certain terminologies that relates to definitions, so it can better reflect how it reads in the ensuing paragraphs throughout the agreement.
Can you point to any, I'm looking at the revised agreement now, any particular sections or...
It says Exhibit 5 was revised, Exhibit 5 was revised, so let's look to Exhibit 5.
There is, there is a summary sheet that you should have in your possession, uh, Commissioner, we did that for, for easy reading, and it will give you a summary of what's, uh, of what's changed.
So the front page of Exhibit 5 as revised is this summary, correct?
That is correct.
Well, it looks like there are 10 revisions.
So if you, there is... Actually, there are more than that.
There is a legend, there's a legend at the very top, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, that legend will encapsulate and totals the number of corrections.
Is it more than 10?
So...
I see the sheet, it says 10 revisions.
So for the record, there's a total of 10 revisions.
Yes.
There was one insertion on page 12, three deletions pages 17, 25, and six deletions and replacements, and that can be found on pages 21, 28, and 34. Then below in that document will give you the details as to what was inserted, deleted, and replaced.
You say these are not substantive changes?
That is correct, it's non-substantive.
Okay.
It's, you know, again, and I, I don't wanna harp on this, but when we publish an agenda, and we publish a backup, and we publish contracts, the public reads this, they, they're not seeing this, I, I just don't think it's a good practice, so I'm, I'm not going to support this. Um, I understand timelines, but we just have to do a better job of making sure that the agenda is accurate, the contracts are accurate, the backup is accurate, and that the public has a chance. Uh, I know my colleagues love to use that word transparency, so I'll use that word transparency now, and just say that we need to make sure that this is clear to the public.
Commissioner, so the original motion was a motion to approve, would you like to amend that to a motion to defer?
Yes, I would like to make this a motion to defer, thank you.
And I'll, and I'll, uh, do my second to that, too. So the motion on the floor, so you're withdrawing your motion to approve, and the seconder is, is, is withdrawing his, um, second to that motion. Now there's a motion on the floor to defer, to defer to when?
I think we can do this at the next meeting, can't we?
I don't know, does that give you sufficient time to publish this?
I just, uh, wanna ask, uh, from Alan Dodd, uh, what is the impact of, um, two weeks?
And also, Susan Grant, Assistant City Manager, if I may, just a few examples of those deletions and replacements, some of them were to replace the word "city," capital C, I-T-Y, with capital C, capital I, capital T, capital Y. Others were to take, um, the word "project" and change it to "city" or "contractor" with "design-build firm." So some of those were just those types of changes, the, the majority of them. So I just wanted to give you a few examples of what some of those changes were.
Isn't there one of these, though, that's also a change to the scoring sheet?
That was a correction in the scoring sheet, yes, that's not in the contract. There was a formula difference, but not on this one. It's, um, the M5, four?
I'm, I'm gonna guess, though, the Commissioner to last one is probably gonna have the same questions and concerns about the other items as well, um, so...
Yeah, and the changes in that one were very similar, um, as far as, um, stylistic, there was some centering, um, and, and those types of changes, with one exception of some language that was deleted.
That's right. Okay, Commissioner, uh, so, uh, Mr. Dodd, could you please, um, respond to the City Manager, is this gonna impact our ability to proceed with our, our, uh, infrastructure project?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, uh, this contract is actually for two consent order projects. Both of them are on a critical path where we, there is no float left in the schedule, so any delays that we do have in the projects and awarding will directly impact our completion on it. Uh, at this point, for each of those projects, we will be expected to incur a $10,000 per day fine. Since the next commission meeting is three weeks from now, that's basically a $210,000 fine for each of the two projects that we can expect that we will incur.
So, Commissioner, what do you want to do? There's a motion and there's a second, so I guess we'll just bring it to a...
Well, it's between a rock and a hard place, I certainly don't want to bring upon the city that kind of a fine.
Well, for punctuation, you know, that's, it seems a little egregious, don't you think?
Well, you're saying for punctuation, but I'm, I'm reading the sheet that was given to us. Um, again, I have not had a chance to look at all of this, some of this obviously is not punctuation, 'cause we're deleting on page 26, section 15.1, line 26, we're deleting a whole, a line. Again, it, it's just a difficult way to operate when we don't have the correct information. We've had, you know, we get our, we get our agendas, we get all of the backup, what, six days in advance, seven days in advance, time to study, time to talk to your district, time to have your pre-agenda meeting with your district, time for the public to read everything. It's just not really fair to anyone to, late in the day, while we've already begun meetings and we don't have a chance to look at any of this, to get a, to get an update, that's all. I'm, I'm gonna actually withdraw my motion, I'm not gonna subject the city to these fines, I'm just saying, I'm making the point that I'm just not comfortable operating like this, that's all.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so, uh, let me ask the Commission, will someone please like to make a motion regarding this item?
So moved.
So it's been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes, the only thing I would like to add is, if there's any difficult, because of the timeliness that you just mentioned, if there's any difficulty in concluding a contract, I'd like to at least suggest that we have the ability to move on to the number two. So, only because of the proviso that you said, so I, I've seen this happen before where we can't, for whatever reason, finalize a contract, and then we have this lengthy delay, so would, uh, would that be acceptable to the Commission?
I'm not quite sure I understand what you're asking.
So if we're not able to conclude the agreement for any reason, we've had this happen in the past where something comes up when we try to conclude the agreement, insurance isn't available, or the performance bond is available, um, I'd just like to make sure that we have the ability to move to the number two ranked, uh, proposer, so that there's no further delay.
Well, I don't know, that's a whole different conversation. We don't know, um, if that second ra-rated proposer is, is gonna be able to fulfill their, their, um, contract for the price and within the timeframe that was originally suggested, so we'd have to throw it out and come back again. I mean, I, I don't see how we can assume that they're going to honor that, uh, that proposal. So I, I understand where you're coming from, but, you know, things change, so...
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned that if, for whatever reason, we're not able to execute this, we're gonna find ourselves incurring this $10,000 a day fine, so...
All right, so let, 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 uh, Mr. Dodd bring that back to the Commission, should that, uh, should there be a stumbling block there, all right? Um, your vote.
That being said, yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that item is approved. Um, M3, motion denying protest submitted by Lanzo Construction Company on the recommendation to award request for proposals, number 103, Design Build Services, for the George T. Lomar Wastewater Treatment Plant Force Main Replacement Project to Rickman Construction of Florida Inc. Mr. Dodd, don't go away. And Susan, you wanna come back up? Could you, okay, all of you, a chorus, can you please, um, give the, uh, Commission a little bit of a background and...
Would you want us to, to make a motion?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Make a motion first?
Um, it's a protest, so before we get there, I think we should at least hear from staff what the, uh, what the context is, and, and then we can make a decision about a motion.
And point of information, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like I just mentioned on this last agenda item, we received late today, uh, revisions on M4, which is tied into this, M3, not 10 revisions like on the last item, but 88 revisions. I have not had a chance to read 88 revisions to a contract change. I have other questions on M3 anyway to begin with, but I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that we recen, we received revised M4, Exhibit 5, um, an entire agreement, and we also, uh, it's just, I don't know how anyone can be expected to read 88 revisions right now.
Okay, well, um, we'll take that up after we've had our presentation, so would you take a moment, please, and provide the Commission the context in which this protest is being made, so we have an understanding as to what we're voting on tonight?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Commission. Glenn Markle's Chief Procurement Officer, um, I'm gonna give you a summary as to what are the, um, basis of the protests. The protester herein is Lanzo. Lanzo submitted, um, a protest on three points, one being that they're saying that Rickman Construction of Florida did not meet the minimum requirements of three projects of similar scope and scale. They also claimed that RMCF, which is Rickman Construction of Florida, um, submitted a proposal replete with false statements. Um, they believe that those false statements goes to the heart of business judgment, integrity, and reliability, um, and that they're not a responsible proposer. And they're also saying that the award recommended to RMCF is not in the best interest of the city. Um, so those are the three, three points they're making. Um, they're also alleging the fact that they believe that the proposed, um, type of, um, material, um, submitted by RMCF is not in the city's best interest. They're basically saying that the ductile iron piping is less advantageous than Lanzo's, uh, proposed pre-stress concrete cylinder pipe. Um, and they go on to make a whole bunch of assertions as far as, um, RMCF exaggerating their experiences, qualifications on various projects in the past, and believe that they do not qualify, uh, for this project. Some of the misrepresentations that they're saying is, is that they use the qualifications of another company with a similar name, that they misrepresented the experience of certain principles of the company, and they won out, went on to incorrectly list various projects not performed by them. There's more allegations that's been made, but pretty much, I'm summarizing what the protest is all about.
And has, has your department, um, come up with responses to these protest items?
Uh, yes, sir, to each and every allegation, which is...
Do you wanna, do you wanna explain to the, to the Commission what your response is?
So as to what relates to the first allegation, um, they're basically, um, stating certain, certain things that was not required by the RFP. So the RFP did not ever, um, state that a certain type of piping needed to be used, or that a certain type of design-build experience needed to be, um, part of a firm's qualification. That was never the case, so that assertion, they failed on, on that merit. I'm gonna jump into the, the, the second point, or actually, the third point, which has to do with, um, that's not in the city's best interest to award to RMCF, that also fails on the merits. Uh, the claim there is, is that it's not in the best interest, and they're basically saying that not in the best interest means that you don't have to award to the highest-ranked response, responsive and responsible firm. So in other words, what they're asking for the Commission to do is act arbitrarily and capricious and contrary to the recommendations of the EC. So based upon that point, that also fail, uh, fails on, um, on the merit. Uh, the second assertion, the second assertion is based upon allegations, based upon RMCF having litigation with Rickman Construction, Inc. It is a court case out of, out of the state of Michigan. They relied primarily on those claims made by that, um, lawsuit to make their, their[1725.13] to make their, their second assertion. The courts have not ruled in favor or against anybody, and therefore what we did was we gave RMCF due process to submit responses to each and every allegation to assertion number two. We feel that the materials provided and backup documentation by, by RMCF completely explains and backs up each and every presentation and representation made by RMCF. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Alan, do you want to add anything to this, to the summary? You're, you're good?
I, I think Glenn said it all as far as, I was not on the evaluation committee, but in my discussion with our members who are in there, they, they support everything that Glenn said.
Okay. And Susan, do you have any other thoughts on this? You're good? Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we able to see the scoring, that final scoring chart?
The matrix?
The matrix.
Commissioners, yes, it's part of your supporting backup documentation, and I believe it's exhibit, I want to say it's exhibit, it's the last exhibit.
It's exhibit five, M4, but when was that revised? I've received a revised score sheet.
Yes, that was revised along with, with the agreement, Commissioner.
Yeah, see, and that's problematic, Mayor. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I didn't want to interrupt you. You go ahead.
I agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Glassman. You've, you've made some true statements tonight, or some statements that I'm in agreement with. We've gotten a lot of revisions tonight that require some, of course, some due diligence to look over to verify and be comfortable with making a decision. I don't want to sit on the dice and look at something, just glance at it and make a decision on what we need to do moving forward. If I, if, I wanted to make a motion to defer this until we could have an opportunity to review further.
Okay, is it, is there, is this part of the consent order? It is?
It is, it is. And I would like to add that the revisions never impacted the total scoring.
Well.
As far as the rankings.
Let's just say this. I'm, I'm looking at the revision. When did we get this revised M4 score sheet? Today?
No, it was last night, I believe.
Oh, last night, sorry. Last night, okay. And when was this scoring done by the selection committee?
It was done.
July 26?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that, that's a big problem. I'm sorry. The selection committee met and did the scoring on July 26, and then October 16, three months later, we're getting revised score sheet. Now, the original score sheet had the two firms separated by .5 difference on the total score. Now the two firms are separated by .2, two tenths of a point. And as I look over this, no?
No.
What does the bottom there where it says?
The actual, the actual delta is even a wider margin, Commissioner?
It looks very small, and maybe I'm.
Yeah.
The glad, it's hard to read. It looks like 7.3 versus 7.9. I was two.
If I can.
Okay. Which seems heavily weighed based on the pricing, all of the other categories. The selection committee almost had.
Yeah, there you go.
Three out of, three out of five people rated the number two firm first on three out, three out of the five people, actually, three out of the four city people, but three out of five total. It looks like the pricing was the big difference. But again, I'm going to agree with the Vice Mayor. This is, I don't understand how we, who didn't pick up for three months that there was, that this was an incorrect score sheet of the selection committee?
So Commissioner, let me just further explain. When you see the corrections on the score sheet, it was actually the weighted, the weights. So if you go above that of the raider, which is Ukani, look at the weights that, that's, that can be found with the other raters. And what we did there is that we saw that the weight to Ukani was not consistent with the others. So we didn't change any scoring. The only thing that we did was we changed the weights, and that, the, the weights were reflected in the RFP. So that's what you see before you. If that would have materially changed anything, we would not be before you moving forward with this recommendation.
Yes, I, I still just find it unacceptable. Help me understand, the 88 revisions in the contract that we have not had a chance to look at, anything significant there?
No. So we're, you're looking at, again, it's more of what I believe is defining terms, where you have a city in caps, because city is a defined term. So obviously, it's, it is a similar agreement with, with more language, and so you will have the 88 corrections being reflected.
And, and again, you look at city being replaced with city all caps, the 100, North Andrews Avenue being replaced with one East Broward Boulevard, the word work being replaced with work all caps are just a few of the examples that you'll see there. But we agree that this is something that shouldn't have happened. We should have had these correct. But in an effort to get this done and, given it was the consent order, we thought it was important to bring these changes and, and try to move this along.
So Mayor.
Is this also part of the consent order as well? This is also?
It's a consent order project, and this one actually has, as Colonel Dodd will let you know, a little bit more of a twist in that. It involves the county as well.
So this has liability for the city with those fines that we heard before if we don't?
It doesn't. What, interim city attorney, Dewane Spence, what I do want to do is kind of, and I understand that the two items are connected, but you're kind of addressing M4 at the time that you should be addressing the protest and M3. And the procedure that's outlined, kind of outlines the things that need to be considered during that protest. The, the score sheet happens not to be one of those items. If you would like, we can provide additional guidance as to the actual protest process. I do understand the concerns with regards to M4, which is related, if, depending on the outcome of M3. The, there are one or two items that are substantive. The majority of the 84 are indeed similar to what Susan pointed out, you know, grammatical and stylistic issues that were addressed and, you know, and correct document was uploaded, basically, so.
Well, there are other paragraphs that have been deleted. Again, I just haven't had the time. I, I, I'm going to agree with the Vice Mayor, but now the deferral is a question because this is a consent order. So I guess we have to just discuss M3 and then M4.
Okay, so. Okay, is there any further comments with regard to M3? Is there a motion?
Well, I.
That says motion denying protest. So is there a motion to deny the protest? How would that be phrased? Is it a motion to approve or a motion to deny? What, how do we phrase that?
Motion approving denial.
Motion approving the denial.
Yes. And the protester is here, Commissioner, so I'm not sure whether you want to give the protester their process?
I think what, I think what someone is probably going to do is to move to defer.
Got it.
So is that what I'm sensing from the commission? Is there a motion to defer this item?
What are the consequences in terms of the fines that we heard about before with consent orders?
Don't ask me, ask them.
I'm asking them.
Mayor and Commissioners, there's actually two different suspenses that we're under. The first one is a FDEP consent order deadline to be finished by 2026, and we will incur that same $10,000 per day fine because we are beyond the, the current schedule to complete it on time. The second and the more.
Hold on a second, 2026?
Yeah, 2026 for the entire project. But, and there's different portions of the project, but the, but right now we have very little flow, and we will probably incur some fines if we delay this beyond. The second one that we are.
Is severe is what you mentioned for the other agenda item that we did pass?
It, it is the same type of fine and the same delay impacts. The more critical one is we have an ILA with Broward County to finish portions on Eisenhower Boulevard in 2025. And right now, it looks like we will incur around $2 million in fines, and we will also continue increasing fines by about $10,000 per day for delays. And we have concerns that if we delay too much, this impacts the convention center and the bypass road projects that they have, and they may have issues with us continuing with the project. And that is why, it's very, very tight right now to complete the project and meet their timelines in accordance with our ILA.
So let me ask you this question, then. If this is so tight, that this is so critical, and this election committee met in July, why is it already the middle of October before we're seeing this?
Commissioner, we had wanted to bring it earlier. However, there was a protest filed. We've been working with the procurement department and with the city attorney's office in order to work the issue so that we did have something that we could bring to the commission. We absolutely would have preferred to have brung it earlier than today.
Well, it only seems like that probably was the right thing to do. Mayor, I do have questions for Mr. Dodd and others, but I don't know how you want to proceed with this, so I'll just leave it up to you. But I do have some questions.
Please continue with your questioning.
Well, we're on M3 now, correct?
Well, on M3 with regard to the protest.
Denying or?
Which is why I asked Glenn to tell us what the items of the protest were, what our city's responses were, and that's the subject matter upon which we're discussing.
Yes, okay, so.
So you're reviewing.
There's something that caught my eye, and I, obviously, when it comes to this kind of work, this is, you know, not my expertise, but this is for Colonel Dodd, actually, because I need to get an opinion on this. And you're much more of an expert when it comes to this. So when I read the CAM and when I check out some of the reasons that we're looking at here in terms of the protest, I want to know what your opinion is on a project of this size, because the two companies are offering a different way to deal with this, and I want to know what your opinion is. RMCF has proposed a ductile iron piping and Lanzo, a pre-stress concrete cylinder pipe. Those are very different, and on a project of this magnitude, do you feel that RMCF's proposed ductile iron piping is the way to go on a project of this scope and magnitude?
Commissioner, both type of materials are fully acceptable, and it was, the proposal or the solicitation was written to allow for different materials and different construction methods in order to determine what is the best value. Both of those fully meet our needs for durability, for, for meeting our time requirements in the ground, more than 50 years to last, dealing with the pressures. So we did not want to make it so specific that it precluded contractors from bidding on the project. And so we allow a variety of materials within what is acceptable, both of those being acceptable, in order for them to give us the best proposal possible.
Okay, but that being said, part of our decision as, as the final stop on this process, we have to, we have to conclude what's in the best interest of the city on a project. So do you feel that that way to go is in the best interest of the city, even though I hear what you're saying? But are you comfortable with that, that that is in the best interest of the city?
Absolutely, yes, Commissioner.
Okay. Mayor, I'm willing to hear whatever the people are here to talk about, the applicant and the protest, so that we can maybe flesh it out more. But right now, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other members of the commission want to speak before I invite the, the parties to speak before the commission?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
It's back to the scoring process.
Uh huh.
The metrics. I, I don't have my, the, the new form in front of me, but from what I'm recalling and what I reviewed before, is it Lanzo? They scored three out of the five, and it was the, the conversation about the, the dollar amount that was making the difference. But the quality, when, when we think about what's best for the city, and and one is scoring so much higher than, or higher than the other, I won't say so much, how do we determine that with being, going with what's best for the city? Before you say that, because this is what I'm, this is where I'm at. When I think about anyone taking a course, you have, you can make 100, or you can make 79 or 69 and still pass. But if we're doing what's best for the city, how do we make that decision when someone has scored higher in different categories?
Got it. And, and I'll start off with that. Susan Grant, Assistant City Manager, again. One of the things we talk about is our procurement process, right? And this is an RFP that was published that had, you know, criteria on it. I think there were three criteria and then price. Price might have been 30% and the rest of the criteria were 70. They were scored, and the one price was, you know, about $3 million less. So the, the contractor that's being recommended was number one on that. And then, yes, three out of the five rated the other proposer higher on those other items. But again, the scoring criteria that we put out, that we've, you know, used consistently with RFPs for many, many years, has this weighting. And, you know, we talk about the initial scoring sheet. The problem that we found when we were publishing was the weighting on one of the five scores was incorrect. And when we corrected that, the spread went from .5 to .8. So the spread was greater under, under that scenario. So that, that's what I will give you, is just that this is the process that we've used, and it's been consistent, and everyone was aware of what the, you know, scoring was and how much weight. Because price, price isn't everything in an RFP. That's what you wish in RFP, not a bid. But it is a portion of it, and in this case, it was 30%.
Let me ask you this, because again, I don't have the scoring sheet in front of me. The categories, one, two, and three, could you tell us what those categories are? You list those categories, please.
Yeah, he's going to give me his reading glasses. There we go. Qualifications of the firm and the team was one, and that had a 25% weight. Project methodology and approach, and that was 40%. And then references and previous experience was 5%, with price proposal being 30%.
Okay, so again, with those one, two, three categories, one was 40%, and these other, the other two, the, this company scored higher, and it was the price.
From, from three of the five, from three of the five raters.
Okay. And then the final dollar amount is what made the difference in the scoring and the award?
Yeah, that's a 3 point something million dollars difference.
That is correct. And Commissioner?
Yes.
When you look at the number ones, the highest ranked receive, I believe, 11 number ones versus the second firm, they received eight. And also, I would want to go and remind you pursuant to the procurement ordinance, section 2-182 subsection B4, it specifically states that the written protest shall state the facts and laws or ordinance upon which the protest of the proposed award is based upon. What they cannot do pursuant to B5 is file a protest and challenge the weight of the evaluation criteria or the formula assigned, assigned to it. And you will see that a portion of the protesters' protest today, they're going to end up introducing that information that's not allowed by the ordinance.
Mayor, if I, if I can, and Glenn, if you can clarify the process that we're undergoing now. So under 2-182, when they submit a protest, you as the chief procurement officer are the one to, to determine whether or not to approve or deny the protest, correct?
That is correct.
And the, what we have before us is an appeal of your decision to deny the protest.
That is correct.
Correct. Okay, so what's before you, Commissioners and, and Mayor, is the review of, of the denial that you have as part of your exhibits from procurement staff and your decision whether or not to affirm it, reverse it, or modify the chief procurement officer's decision with regards to this protest. And there's sort of criteria that's outlined within the code that determines on the basis of which he can deny a bid protest or not.
City Attorney, here's where I have an issue, and I think maybe we need to go back and look at some point in time, the way we do these selections and the weighting of these categories.
Mm-hmm.
Because obviously, the, the five people that are on the selection committee, if, if they see a price that's higher than another price, of course, they're going to rate the lower price as number one, and the, the higher price is number two. I mean, that's obviously what someone would do. But that's too much weight for that because it's just an obvious reaction that you're going to go with the lower price, because that's all you're looking at, is price. You're not looking at qualifications of the firm and the team. You're not looking at project methodology and approach. You're not looking at references and previous experience. So that's almost an unfair advantage. And you said 30%, is that what that is?
It is true.
That's, that's a, that's a very high weighted number percentage for an item that is obviously going to get just a response the same way from everybody. I can't even imagine, I don't know, I'd have to look back and see what other selection committees have done. But are there examples of, in a selection committee where everybody chose number one ranked as the one that gave the highest price? I doubt it. But again, aren't these just simply guaranteed maximum prices and not to exceed price? Aren't we able to still even negotiate that price? Or when the final contract is negotiated, that price can change, correct?
Correct. And that's part of why the, the decision to grant or deny a protest does not consider the weight score in that decision-making process.
No, I understand that. But I'm saying it does have, to me, just an outsized impact on the way we do these selection committees in and of itself because of the fact, as I just mentioned, people will always select the lower price that's offered as the number one selection, and then that, and then that skews the whole thing.
Commissioner, if I may?
Yes.
Glenn Markle's here. Just wanted to point the fact that the valuation committee does not rank the, the pricing. That is already formula-based, and it's the procurement department that does that, not the selection committee.
The category of price proposal that's listed on this updated sheet under each person, they didn't rank that?
No, that comes from the procurement department.
Well, that even makes it worse. That even makes it worse, okay? That makes it worse. So that's not helpful.
So. So, you know, why don't we, I mean, we can go on and on about this and I think your point is well made. There are several people who have signed up to speak. Why don't we hear from them and then let's make a decision about what we're going to do tonight, okay? So thank you, Glenn. Thank you. Rhonda, did you want to say something?
Not particularly, Mayor, but I just wanted to, I will, since you asked, just point out that the procedure, as the interim city attorney stated, under 2-182B1, for the chief procurement officer to make his evaluation of the protest, they have to allege either a failure by the city to follow the city's procurement ordinance or any applicable law. So that's really the standard that...
So it's a legal standard, it's not a qualitative standard with regard to their qualifications?
Correct. And that's why, as the interim city attorney said, under, further under the same ordinance, that the written protest may not challenge the relative weight of evaluation criteria or a formula for assigning points.
Okay, so that's the standard we have to use. Okay. That's important. I appreciate you telling us that. Okay, a few people have signed up to speak and I'll call your names in three so you be prepared to speak. Give you a couple of minutes each. Matt Sacco, followed by Joe Goldstein, followed by Salvatore De La Sandro. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for the time to speak. Matt Sacco, representing the design-build team of Lonzo Construction and CES Consultants. I'm joined tonight by Joe Goldstein, attorney for Schutz Bowen, Juan Alfonso, president of CES, and Sal De La Sandro with Lonzo, who also give remarks. I'm here to discuss the protest appeal that our client has filed on the basis that the Lonzo CES team is clearly the most qualified and proficient team for the GT Loemar Force Main Replacement Project. This is a uniquely challenging and absolutely critical project for the city, one that carries with it financial risk. As Director Dodd mentioned, if the project is any way delayed or mishandled, for that reason, we ask that you uphold the protest and grant the project to the Lonzo CES team, who are clearly acknowledged by a majority of the selection committee, your staff, to be superior in qualifications, experience, and project approach. It was only a slight difference in price, as mentioned, that with only two respondents, significantly skewed the scoring against Lonzo and CES. That said, it is explicitly written in the RFP and in the city's code that the city commission is the final step of the procurement process and has the right and the responsibility to award the project to the team that is in the best interest of the city. So we believe it is in the best interest of the city that we ask you to award this project to the most experienced and qualified team as deemed by the majority of your selection committee and your staff, Lonzo and CES. Thank you.
So Matt, having heard what Rhonda said, the standard by which we must determine whether or not to approve or not approve the protest, it's a legal standard as opposed to a qualitative standard. Has the applicant, excuse me, has the standard, the legal standard that was just described been violated in any way by the applicant?
Mayor, since, as all of you know, I'm not an attorney, I would actually ask if it's okay with you, Joe Goldstein, to actually address that?
Mr. Goldstein, you want to step up? Please. You know the question I'm asking, so...
Yes, Mayor. Good evening to the mayor, vice mayor, and the commissioners. I'd be glad to, the short answer is yes.
Great.
And in my presentation, I will explain why.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a, I submitted a PowerPoint. I think the clerk has it, just like four slides.
Okay.
Well, while they're loading that up, just for the record, Joe Goldstein from Schutz and Bowen, I'm here on behalf of Lonzo Construction Company. That's the procurement. If we can go to the next page, please. So our protest raised three issues. All of them, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilman, are legal issues that we believe are independent basis to grant our protest. Because of time and because of the first two, the ones relating to the failure to meet minimum qualifications and the false statements, they quite frankly would take a much longer time than I think you all have here to debate that. But I do want to just point out one thing, that there's a pending lawsuit. It isn't, the lawsuit's pending in Michigan because Rickman, Inc. started in Michigan. But the lawsuit involves the same allegations that we've raised and it's allegations that started first with Hillsborough County. Rickman Construction, Inc. said that Rickman Construction of Florida is basically using its experience and qualifications to qualify. That's really the basis of our point one and point two. And yes, there is a pending lawsuit and yes, Rickman of Florida does dispute it, but it's a pending lawsuit that goes to the qualifications of a company that you're about to award a contract to, while that litigation is still ongoing. So...
But do you feel that this commission's hands are tied? I'm looking at your three issues and none of them refer to legal issues, they're all qualitative issues. Do you feel that even if we agreed with everything you said, do you feel that our hands are tied because of the standard that our city attorney has just established for us in order to be able to justify a protest?
Not at all, Mayor. The first point goes to are they, do they meet the minimum eligibility qualifications? So that's a condition of your request or proposal and I think both the interim city attorney and I think Mr. Marcos would agree with me. If we're correct on that, that they don't meet your minimum qualifications and yet you have a recommendation to award to them, that is the first legal deficiency.
That's not a legal deficiency.
It is, it is, Mr. Mayor.
Is it?
It's based on facts, but in your solicitation document, they must be, they must meet the minimum eligibility requirement. So that definitely would be a legal.
Okay.
And just like point number two goes to the responsibility, and again, it has factual issues that lead to a legal conclusion. But really what I wanted to do tonight is to just focus on the third issue. And that is, the third issue of our bid protest appeal is, is the city complying with this solicitation document that says you should award to your best interest? And that comes from page 53 of the solicitation document. If we could go one slide further there. So what you use is an evaluation committee, that's the first step in the process. They use a fixed scoring system to make that recommendation. We are not challenging that scoring system. We are not challenging how the scores are calculated. But what we are challenging is what is the city commission's role in determining compliance with the award criteria? And if you look in your solicitation document on page 53, it doesn't say, it does not say this city commission will award the contract to the highest-ranked company. If it said that, then yes, our protest would be without merit. What it does say is that the city commission will award to the design-build firm who will best serve the interest of the city. The point scores are a guide, not a handcuff. And what happened here is you should use your judgment as the city commission in this almost $50 million procurement, because what happens here, as you said, three of the five evaluators, if we go to the next slide, three of the five evaluators determined, I already said that, let's go one more slide, please. There we go. So it's undisputed, based on three out of the five evaluators, all of whom were City of Fort Lauderdale employees, that we were higher in experience, qualifications, and importantly, most importantly, project approach. Why is project approach the most important one? Because there we have that fundamental difference. Yes, the solicitation document allowed PCCP or ductile, but three of your five evaluators scored us higher on all three of those technical requirements, including project approach, recognizing that our solution was the preferred solution and we were scored higher. Price was the other 30%. But here's why you have to exercise your judgment. The way that your ranking method does, they got a one automatically because they were lower and we got a two. Times the weighted criteria, we were 1.5 points higher than them because there's five evaluators. That same difference would be the same if we were a penny higher than them, we would still be a two, or if we were $100 million higher than them. Now, that's not a fault of the system, but what that emphasizes is to you all that you need to use your own judgment and you need to determine, is that in your best interest? When you have a 6.6% price difference and you have a consensus that we're the best qualified with the best project approach, with the best experience, when the other company has a significant litigation pending relating to their qualifications, is it in your best interest as a matter of law, under the solicitation document, to award to them?
Is it a matter of law, though?
Yes, it's a...
I mean, you're talking to me.
Yes, I'm talking to you, Mayor, lawyer. It's, I think what you're confusing is it's factual findings...
Right.
...that lead to a conclusion of law. Think of it in a...
Well, you apply the facts to the law.
Correct.
And did the evaluation committee misapply the law?
Well, I'm not challenging the evaluation. We're not here saying, wait a second, it should have been the school, the ranking should have been different. We concede 100% that the ranking is accurate. But again, if you look at page 52 and 53 of the solicitation, the scoring is only one step in the process. The next step is the award.
Right.
And our legal challenge, Mayor, is the award is arbitrary, the award is capricious because it's not in the council's, the city's best interest. That's a legal issue. You have the ability to determine that our protest has merit and you should reverse the item.
So let me ask you something. From your perspective, I would say, yes, you think that the decision made was arbitrary and capricious. From the winning applicant's perspective, they would say, well, it was done within the discretion of the committee. Now, does the committee have discretion or do they not?
We are not challenging the committee's recommendation. What we're challenging is, remember what we're challenging. We do an appeal, we do an initial protest to Mr. Marcos and we say to him, your requirement for award is what is, if we, can we go back three slides? We've got the quote there. Go one forward, I, thank you. So there's the quote. Which design-build firm will best serve the interest of the city? That's on page 53. That's a page after the point scoring. And my point to you is that it's your obligation and your duty to determine what's in your best interest. Now, you as a city commission could say, we're just going to rubber stamp the selection committee.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Your client's proposal may be in the best interest of the city, okay? Let's just, let's just go with me for a second.
Yep.
Let's just say, all the criteria that you've described tonight in your PowerPoint presentation would otherwise suggest that despite what the scoring committee has determined, that you believe that your client would be, your client's ability to perform this task would be in the best interest of the city. And let's say it's true. But the scoring committee said no. Wouldn't we have to show that they have violated a legal process to get to where they did as opposed to just our having, you know, an appellate review does not permit, the appellate court to review the facts again, right? That we're only here to determine whether or not there was a legal violation in the lower court, kind of speaking, in the lower court, for us to be able to overturn the evaluation committee's decision. I'm the one, I mean, I'm going to say tonight, your company is in the best interest of the city, all right? But are our hands tied because we cannot show that they have violated the, any legal process here in the evaluation process?
Not at all. And here's why.
Tell me why.
Here's why. Again, the evaluation committee never made a determination what was in the best interest. Their role is to simply rank one versus two. And as Commissioner Glassman made a point of, they don't even get to choose who should get the one or the two for price. Some jurisdictions don't just do low gets one and high gets two. Some jurisdictions say, wait a second, maybe it's worth their price, especially in a procurement of 49 or 46 million. Sometimes, selection committees or evaluation committees, or what I'm going to tell you, you have the ability to do now, can determine the reasonableness in the price in context of the other elements that you've already valued. And so what I would say to you, Mayor Trentellus, is that the evaluation committee does not make a determination of best interest. So I'm really giving you two opportunities to determine the best interest. The first is in our bid protest appeal. And our bid protest appeal basically was to Mr. Marcos's decision that just basically treated our argument like we were challenging the scoring. We're not challenging the scoring. What we're saying is there's another step in your RFP. I didn't make up this language. Your RFP says will best serve the interest of the city. Now, you as a city commission, I'll concede, if you want to determine that best interest is always what your evaluation committee does, then deny our protest, absolutely. If you want to always stay here and tell everyone that when the rankings come in, we're going to rubber stamp them without making a determination of best serve the interest, then you should deny our protest. But if you want to comply with your solicitation document, you should at least debate as part of our bid protest appeal, is that 6.6% price difference, is that worth it when you've got an additional three of your five evaluators finding it? And if the answer to that is yes, then you should grant our bid protest appeal, reverse the item and then an M4, make a motion to award to Lonzo Construction. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Let's see. Salvatore De La Sandro, followed by Juan Alfonso, followed by Alan Bogdanoff. Hello, Sal.
Hello, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Commissioners.
What do you got to add to that?
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein, for your presentation. You did a very good job. We are not here challenging the procurement. I think they did a fantastic job. They are very respectful throughout the process and we appreciate everything that they've done. I am here to say that I'm a third-generation contractor for Lonzo Construction. It's a family business. We are very well-versed with projects like this, a GT Loemar. We are doing one as we speak in Miami-Dade County. We have concerns that the city may, if choosing the proposer, will experience possible setbacks. I believe even in the proposal, their schedule didn't even hit the accommodated dates, which, you know, raises an eyebrow. So we feel that we can best serve the city and hit all the deadlines and mitigate the liability that comes with it and we do hope that you take our protest into consideration moving forward.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Juan Alfonso, followed by Alan Bogdanoff, followed by Daniel. Daniel, you've got to have better handwriting. Manzi. Juan.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and the rest of the staff. My name is Juan Alfonso. I am the president of CES Consultants and we are the engineers of record on the Lonzo team. CES, we've been in business for about 22 years providing this very same type of service that's being proposed today. We actually have offices throughout South Florida, including here in Broward County. And during these last 22 years, we have been performing flawless engineering services and some of those services have actually been done in conjunction with Lonzo Construction. So there's a great relationship being offered to the city by means of the Lonzo CES partnership. In fact, this very same team just finished recently an emergency project in Miami-Dade County that had received an award. So we're very proud of that and we feel that actually staff recognized that level of commitment, that level of excellence, that level of collaboration and partnership by their ranking, three out of the five selection committee members and the Lonzo CES team being ranked first. And we recognize that that is important as Mr. Goldstein mentioned earlier, I think it lends itself to the acting on the best interest of the city. So in closing, I would just like to say that we urge the commission to take... So in closing, I would just like to say that we urge the commission to take, and the mayor to take this into consideration, to accept our protest and reverse the next item and award this contract to the Lonzo and CES team. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alan Bogdanoff, followed by Daniel, followed by Mike Fisher.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and I'm going to let my client kind of speak to a lot of the issues. I think what they're challenging here is-
Who's your client?
I'm sorry, Rickman Construction, the successful winner of the project. And we've got a couple of, I guess we have a sore loser, so... And with all due respect, if they're talking about following code, I checked this morning, and I didn't see either one of them registered who spoke on behalf of Lonzo, which is Sacco and Goldstein. So perhaps they should. But if they did, they did it at the last minute. In terms of the code, what, we actually wrote a significant response to the challenge. They're trying to change the code. If you don't like the code, change the code. But under the current circumstances, they won based on the code, which is 30% was price, and that was a significant issue there. I'm going to let my client speak to their qualifications. Honestly, I'm at a loss as to where they're going with this, just simply saying that it's in the best interest of the city to go with someone else other than the one that the city vetted, secured. I got a call actually yesterday afternoon trying to, you know, secure some additional information on the qualifications, and we provided them the information that they asked. And I'm just a little confused as to, you know, what the concerns are. But I'm going to, I would actually defer to my client to kind of give you the details that you need. I would hope that you would go with procurement and their decision because they did deliberate, and they did evaluate, and it was fair, and there was nothing... Actually, my client has done work for the city. Good work for the city, under budget, and still doing work for the city. So I'm not exactly sure what the concern is.
Have they done work for the city in the nature of the type of work that's being done right now? Guys, can you kind of... Have they done work for the city in the nature of the kind of work that's being contemplated under this contract?
The requirement was, and I will let them speak to it, it was in my, I guess with Miami-Dade County, where they showed the projects that they did. They're actually doing some work in River Oaks right now. Again, I will let them speak to that. That's technical.
Okay, okay.
So.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel, followed by Mike Fisher. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, sorry about my handwriting. My name is Daniel Mancini. I am the president of Rickman Construction Florida, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I want to make it very clear, Rickman Construction, the original Rickman Construction that my father started in 1965, was formed in Detroit, Michigan. My father sent me to South Florida as a young man, I was 21-years-old, with a civil engineering degree, and said, you're working in Florida. I've been here since 1986, doing this type of work, not only for the city of Fort Lauderdale, but all of the municipalities in the area. We currently have, we're almost complete with River Oaks, which is a $25 million project. We're way ahead of schedule, and we're under budget. Similar pipe sizes, 60-inch concrete instead of 60-inch ductile iron, but very similar ground conditions. We are also currently building the pump station that's going to drain River Oaks. That job is, again, ahead of schedule and on budget. With that, Rickman entities, including Rickman Construction Florida, has been in business for, since 1965, if you do the math, it's over 55 years. We are the only company in this room right now that has never defaulted on the bond, never, zero default. Lonzo cannot say that. Their company just reorganized just three years ago and is a new owner. So if they've been throwing stones at us, I want to make sure you understand their predicament. Their president is suing the other family members right now, today. It's in the public record. With that, Rickman Construction Florida is prepared to build this project. We've got some innovative ideas. The pipe that we've chosen, ductile iron, has as good, if not better, reliability, pressure capabilities, life than PCCP. And finally, we've been accused of not having PCCP pipe experience. Rickman Construction Florida has laid a tremendous amount of PCCP pipe. We are actually on the Miami-Dade Emergency Status List for PCCP, and we've done a tremendous amount of repairs for Miami-Dade Water and Sewer Department, PCCP. With that, I'll hand it over to Mike Fisher. Thank you for your time, and we hope for a positive outcome for Rickman Construction Florida.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fisher.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
You're with Rickman, correct?
Yes, Rickman Florida. In the evaluation process, we agree, three out of five ruled that Lonzo won on those accounts. However, every member, because we were there, heard them say, that both firms were highly qualified to perform the work. The fact of the matter is, we won based on price. Best value? Does price have anything to do with determining best value? I think it has a high element of concern for the constituents and the city of Fort Lauderdale. As far as the arbitrary and capricious standards that we're talking about, that Lonzo is accusing procurement of applying, staff and procurement ruled in their memorandum to you that we were the best and most qualified contender here. And on that basis, the way the rules are written, the way the code is written, the way the law is written, we won the project, and we should be awarded that project. They're attacking us on misrepresentations. Those attacks are false. We provided a full document with documentation to prove that. So we don't understand why any of that would be considered. PCCP was not a technical requirement, a sole requirement of the solicitation. We had three choices: ductile iron, PCCP, or steel. We chose ductile iron as the best product for this project. I think you just heard Mr. Dodd say he supports that. So that issue goes away. There were no statutes violated by Rickman Florida in our proposal. We did everything we could to deliver the best price and value for this city. We ask that you award this contract to Rickman Florida. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay. So Commissioners, we'll start with, I guess we'll start with Commissioner Herbst. Do you have any comments on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, a very complicated issue. There's a lot of backup, which I have had the opportunity to review. I've met with both of the groups that are vying for the contracts. This is a tough one. I think both of these firms are actually very, very good. I think we've got a lot of experience working with Rickman. We've got a lot of experience with Lonzo. I think they're both good firms. I think they both do great work. I think they will both serve the city now and for a long time into the future. I have to respect the process, though. I was very much involved in establishing the protest process because we never had one traditionally in the city. And everybody would come to the city commission and plead their case, and it was not a very effective way of conducting business. So I was involved with the prior procurement director in developing the protest approach so that we would have a formal, structured way of handling these things as we deal with it as a commission. So I understand a lot of the issues that were brought up by Lonzo. I think their experience is excellent. I do think they would do a phenomenal job. But at the end of the day, I believe that it's important to respect staff's approach and their conclusion in this. Again, like I said, I've gone through all this information. I've gone through all the backup. I've looked at everything on the individual items. I've looked at the scoring sheets. I've looked at the comments that the respective scorers put down there to understand how they came up with their numbers. I looked at the background of the individuals involved, because I know that was one of the issues that was referenced in there about the project manager. And I asked the city auditor to go ahead and look into this, and I looked at timesheets, and I looked at pictures of the individual actually working on the job. So I've done extensive research on this item, and I'm inclined to agree with staff's recommendation.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take under consideration what Mr. Spence has given to us with instructions and explaining the process and giving us the legal information of how we need to follow the process for our city. With that being said, I will be voting in the manner of denying the protest.
Accepting the protest?
Accepting.
Wait, denying?
Well, how's it written?
So it would be affirming the denial of the protest.
One more time, Mr.-
Affirming. If you deny the protest, then you accept city staff's recommendations.
I'm accepting city staff's recommendations.
Staff's recommendations, okay. Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to have to echo some of the sentiments from Commissioner Herbst. This is a tough one. My main objection, again, is I have not even had a chance to read the 88 revisions that are in front of us right now.
We had all this time.
Well, I was trying to listen to-
What have you been doing?
I was trying to listen to the testimony. I'm sorry. You can hold that. By the way, everything's on your iPad. You don't have to kill a tree to print everything out. Okay, so...
Commissioner? If you'd like, I can detail a little bit more of the changes, because they were mine, if you'd like.
No, that's okay. I do appreciate it. I'm good now, because we've already heard where this is going. This is a tough one, and I do respect both firms. And I think that there will be more work in the future. Again, my main objection is, I mean, I would go for actually a deferral on this because I think that everyone has the need to be able to read, you know, 88 revisions and read all of the backup as presented to us correctly. I have issues with that correction of the score sheet that we just got last night. Again, there's too many things that happened here that I wish did not happen here. But I, you know, I see what's happening with regards to my colleagues and where this is going to go. But those are not my objections. My objections are, as I just stated. But I cannot, in good conscience, have the city exposed to the liability of those fines on consent order issues. So that's a difficult one for me. But again, I do want to commend both firms. Everyone is excellent, what you have done so far, and I know what you'll do in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Sherman?
Well, this is a toughie. I'm going to take a little bit of time here, and I bring you back up there. I apologize, guys. But listen, Mr. Mayor, what you did say, it resonated with me. I'm not an attorney, but you are, and I'm listening to the legalese. But if I could have Mr. Dodd come back up and just reiterate some of the concerns that I had. It sounds like, they talk about quality, and they talk about what best interest is. Do you feel that one of them is better than the other, or could either one of them perform the duties and the project?
There we go. Commissioner, both of these companies have excellent reputations. They've done a lot of work for the city. I am very confident either one of them would excel at delivering this project.
Okay, let me ask you a question. Either one of them could deliver the project on time. Is there any question that one of them would take longer than the other, knowing the fines that we're talking about, or not?
I think both of them understand the timelines we're under and will work as hard as they can. One of the issue is how quickly we get through executing the contract and issuing a notice to proceed. But I think that's really on us working with them to get through the paperwork, the administrative side, so they can get to doing the work. But I do believe that-
No, no, keep going. I don't want them to go too far.
I do believe that they are capable of meeting the deadlines, knowing that right now we are on a critical path timeline.
Okay. Once again, go through the process of the award, since the award, the appeal, and then after the appeal. Just briefly, what the charter says, your role, our role, everybody's role is in that particular process.
So the ordinance does, it does outline the process. So you have the notice of intent to award. We post that up for five days. Within that five days, you do have the ability of a protester to protest the actual recommendation. That protester has to have standing. Once I review the protests, obviously, I have to end up forwarding due process. In this case, there was a second assertion that made a lot of allegations pertaining to a lawsuit, and therefore, we allowed for Rickman to then intervene and then give us a response with backup documentation to show that indeed, the allegations were not accurate. They did that. Once I rendered my decision, they have three days from that decision to appeal before the city commission.
So I'm trying to figure our role. All of that is in staff. None of that is in the city per se, right? There's two attorneys here. If I could bring you both up, very briefly, I'm not going to bring you up too, just like a one or two word. The mayor says that our role is not to go on quality, but simply if there's a legal matter, like, not evidentiary, but it's like a process or basis of appeal, that's the only... I mean, is that, or where did he go?
I think he had a personal break.
Oh. But your contention, I mean, he's, and I'm not an attorney, but that our role is just to, like in appellate court, not on the evidence itself, but just if there's a problem with the process. I mean, I'm just trying to see what my role is here.
I'll rephrase it as I think, and just so you know, I've been practicing procurement law since 1989, and half the time, I'm on the protester's side and half this time. So what we have to show is a violation of your charter, your code, the solicitation document, or just general law. And so our legal issues all relate to violations of the solicitation. One was that we believed they didn't meet the minimum eligibility requirements. One was that we didn't believe that they were responsible. Those are requirements not only in your code, but also in the solicitation document. And then the third was a requirement in the solicitation document that the city make the determination of the best interest, if we wanted to catch up to Mayor. And so those are legal issues. If we're right, and Mr. Marcos was inaccurate in determining that our legal argument that the award is not in the best interest, then that would have been a violation of the solicitation. And if the solicitation is violated, that's an error of law that you all then could grant our protest.
In fairness, if I could have Ms. Bogdanoff come up for a second. And again, we've had this before, where we've had issues that have come before us. And in your opinion, again, just, I'm trying to see our role here, and it's, I think that you would do a fantastic job. I think, I have a confidence, I think both groups would do great. And I'm not sure if that's our role. What do you see as our role here? I mean, is it just to determine if it's a legal issue, or what?
Well, I think that what you had is their protest brought up several issues, which were unsubstantiated, and then they wanted you to violate your own code and basically turn it on its head and say that the scoring should not include the pricing, because they were more money, and that they were worth it because we didn't qualify. And none of the qualification accusations that they made were accurate. So they're wrong on all accounts, and there's actually no reason for, in my opinion, for the city commission to overturn what staff determined. We provided them all of the ev- what staff determined. We provided them all of the evidence that all of their accusations were inaccurate, and their only last standing argument was, we're worth more money. And I don't know how you justify that.
Mr. Dwayne, this is the last question. And Dean, I did reference you a second ago about the comment that you had made. We had done this before, remember, Dwayne, it's come a couple of times. And the problem is, we're not supposed to venture into the procurement process. For us to start embedding ourselves in that process is something that we're forbidden from doing. The only thing we could do, and the last time this came up, was to say whether or not the process was followed. Is that our role? I mean, are we supposed to say which one is better, which one we like, or are we limited simply by saying the process was not followed? What is our role here today?
You're evaluating the chief procurement officer's denial of the protest. So the basis of the denial of the protest, and as stated by Assistant City Attorney Rhonda Hassan earlier, the basis for his denial has to be the evaluation of their protests, which states specific facts or law or ordinance on which the protest of the proposed award is based. And so it's based on all of those relevant information that was provided to the chief procurement officer. He's issued his determination that they have not stated or identified a sufficient basis to overturn the award. And now before you is determining whether or not you believe the procurement officer was correct in his finding.
So this is more of an evaluation of the procurement officer than anything else?
The document that I believe, the documents that I believe are exhibits 3A and 3B of your, of the packet.
Okay. This is tough. Dean, I'm going to defer back to you.
Okay, so we're going to take a vote. But before we do that, let me just say that when I first looked at these two proposals, I've always been concerned about, you know, cities always trying to save money, and they always choose the least expensive option. And I'm always concerned about whether or not we're going to get a good product, even though it's the cheapest amount of money. I know that's the rule, but at the same time, we have to be careful. But tonight, you've demonstrated to us that both companies could do equally good job. And based on what Rhonda's indicated to us, what the standard is that we have to follow, I don't think we have any choice but to deny the protest because they're both qualified. The one that was chosen by staff is less money as required by our ordinance. And finally, the standard that was followed by our staff and the one that we have to follow as a commission, I think would prevent us, legally prevent us from granting the protest. So, you know, I'm sorry, but I have to, I'm listening to the majority here, and I think I need to go with the majority, and I think that's where we need to go. So would someone like to make a motion with regard to M2?
Can I make this simple? I mean, just so everybody knows what they're voting on. Can I just take out one, can I just make, instead of a motion approving the denial, it's getting kind of confused. Can I clean that up the way I make, the way I word it?
Excuse me, I think we're at M3. I apologize. Yeah. What was your motion?
Oh, no, the way, yes is a no, or no is a yes, it's very confusing.
Well, there's a motion, the staff has asked us to make a motion denying the protest. That's, and all you have to do is, I make a motion.
Well, if I say a motion to protest, then if I just-
Motion denying the protest.
Just read the words.
And if you vote yes, you're denying the protest.
Okay, fine. Okay, it's a negative, it's a negative. I'll do it that way. Okay, motion to deny the protest.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second to deny the protest?
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any further comments from the commission? There being none, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Just before, so everybody's clear, denying the protest means you're going with staff, with Rickman.
And yes.
Denying the protest, a yes means you're denying the protest and going with Rickman.
Correct.
Thank you, Dad.
Okay, Grandpa. Please call the roll. I'm sorry?
Not to complicate things, but the denial is affirming the staff's denial, the chief procurement officer's denial.
Affirming the staff's recommendation.
So a yes means you're affirming the staff.
But it's not awarding, the award is the next item.
No, the award is the next item.
I just wanted to clarify for the record.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Based on the mayor and what we've heard here, I don't have, I don't think I have the, I mean, I think that our only option is yes.
Okay. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes. So the protest has been denied. Onto M4. This is a motion to approve the project with Rickman Construction for the George T. Lomar Waste Water Treatment. We have several people signed up to speak, but Mr. Goldstein and Alan Bogdanoff, do you have anything to add to your comments other than what you've said?
We've got that agreement.
Okay, all right. So do I hear a motion to approve the design build agreement with George T. Lomar Waste Water Treatment Plant with Rickman Construction?
Do we need to say anything about the fact that we have an updated contract that was, as amended, as the contract is amended? Do we need to say that legally?
No, sir, because it was provided before, before we actually vote on that.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thanks.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and M4 is approved. Thank you, everybody. I know it's a difficult decision for all of us.
Right.
Appointment of board and committee members. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the names?
Yes, thank you. For tonight's resolution, Citizens Committee of Recognition, Michael Albetta, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Fire Rescue Advisory Committee, Dennis Ulmer, nominated by Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman. Historic Preservation Board, Sonia Most, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. Homeless Advisory Committee, Fiona Johnson, nominated by Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman. Marine Advisory Board, Robin Chiarelli, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Parks, Recreation and Beaches Board, Rochelle Coatsy, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And we received a few additional names for the resolution tonight, and I'll read those, and if we can have it as amended. For the Charter Revision Board, Jaclyn Scott, nominated by Mayor Trentalas. Historic Preservation Board, Shane Taylor, nominated by Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman. Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee, Fred Strassel, nominated by Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman. And a couple of reappointments, Marine Advisory Board, James Harrison, nominated by Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman. And Public Art and Placement Advisory Board, Sarah Glass, nominated by Commissioner Sturman, and that rounds it out.
Sarah Glass.
Are there any other modifications or additions to the ones that the clerk has just read into the record? There being none?
Mr. Mayor, there were some that were sent to the clerk this morning. Were they part of the, did they submit their applications?
Yeah, I sent an email regarding that. There is only currently one additional vacancy for Historical Preservation Board, and that's Commissioner Sturman's.
Do you have other names?
I read one for Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman, Shane Taylor.
Okay, that was it.
And the one for Commissioner Herbst as well.
Okay. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
No, we have discussion before you call the roll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sure, go ahead.
Charter review. Why are you adding one to charter review? Just, I think I know the answer to that, but just run this by me, how this works.
Because the person that I had appointed had just, has resigned.
Now, why did that person resign?
Because he's running for city commission.
Okay, so you're not, so you take politics out of that, correct? Now, your appointment is, I believe that person is the treasurer of somebody else's political campaign in the current cycle.
My campaign.
Correct. I'm going to object to that for the same reason why the first one resigned. I think it's inappropriate to have anybody involved in a campaign being on the Charter Review Commission, for the exact same reason why it's inappropriate for a candidate to be on the Charter Review Commission. I think it's highly inappropriate.
Oh, but it's okay for registered lobbyists to chair it and constantly bash the commission and the city manager. But that's okay. You don't have an issue with that.
Well, Steve, it's my motion.
I understand that.
I made a point. You want to make a point with another one at another-
No, I think I just made a point. I-
That one is not being up for discussion.
If I can provide clarification with regards to the candidacy, so our code 2-219E provides, requires that any member of any city board or other board appointed by the city commission who becomes a candidate for a public elective office shall automatically forfeit his office. So that's the reason why the member had to resign.
Right, nothing nefarious. It's required.
Now, this is a nomination that we had for, correct? We didn't vote, but these people that were just nominated, now we vote for them as a consent item in block? Or how do we do that?
You traditionally vote for all appointments in block, correct?
Could we pull one?
That hasn't been the practice, but I don't see why.
Okay, I'd like to pull that nomination.
You want to, you don't want to vote, you want to vote for that one separately?
Correct. I find it very inappropriate.
Can we do that?
Oh, Dwayne answered that, but we do have a-
I believe we've done this in the past. Have we done that in the past? Yes, we have. It's been years.
It's a single resolution, so it'd have to be a separate resolution. I'm not, I am not familiar with that occurring in the past.
Yeah, we've had some dissent as to some of these appointments in the past. So I know it's been many years, but I know we have, this issue has come up before, not the first time. Well, if Vice Mayor made the resolution, you'd have to ask her to change the resolution. So far, the resolution is to include everybody and to move forward.
Hey, Vice Mayor, I ask, could you make a resolution to approve everyone but that one, to pull that one, and to approve all but that?
What is your reason for wanting to?
It's highly inappropriate. It's political and-
Is this the mayor's appointment?
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's, Steve, it's not, it's not the mayor's appointment, it's the mayor's nomination. Get that through your head. It's a nomination.
Wait, don't tell me to get it through my head. We all have appointments to the Charter Revision Board.
We all have-
What?
Appointments that we nominate.
No.
Okay, so we don't need to vote then?
So what's inappropriate, though? What's inappropriate? Tell me. What's inappropriate?
Well, let's vote. I think having somebody who's involved in a political campaign right now should not be on the Charter Review. You could disagree with me, so let's vote on it.
You want to get rid of everyone on the Charter Revision Board who's involved in political campaigns?
Well, no, but-
Why not? Why not?
Steve, I do not have to answer to you. How many weeks do I have to tell that to you? This is my opinion, end of story.
There are other people-
Well, let me ask you something. If there's a political campaign consultant that's hired by a candidate, should that person be denied the right to sit on a board?
Well, if you think so, when they're up for nomination, you could bring it at that particular time. It's your right to nominate.
I'm just asking you, is that, is that a standard that you would like the commission to follow, that anybody-
Well, somebody who's actually on a form, who's an actual, submitted to the clerk, who's an actual intricate part, not a job, but they're the campaign, there's two spots, you sign for the campaign and you sign it, or you sign for the treasurer, two names on our form that's submitted to the clerk. And I personally think it's inappropriate. I don't, maybe three out of the five agree, maybe not, but that's my opinion.
And so I'm asking as a follow-up, do you feel that anyone that is running for office, if they have an appointment on any board or committee that's involved in their campaign in some official capacity, that they should also be denied the right to serve on a board or committee?
Well, that's my-
I'm just asking you in general.
Not necessarily. I think, I think you have to draw the line somewhere.
You just don't like Jackie Scott, so she's using her as an example.
Exactly.
Mayor, I take offense at that remark.
Well, I take offense at what you're trying to do. I have an appointment. I've never, even though there are appointments you've made, I've never protested them.
But nobody's ever been appointed that's been-
It's your prerogative to appoint who you want. That's your choice.
But not somebody who's involved, actively involved in a campaign. That's why the candidate can't do it. That's my opinion. You could have a different opinion and vote me down.
Well, but I'm just asking, do you feel that that should go for anybody who's involved in-
I'm not even going to answer that question. In this particular case, I have, I have something I think we want to vote on. If you want to talk, talk, but I'm not, I'm just, I do not think it's appropriate.
I see.
But don't we have to follow the charter? Don't we have to follow a process just because-
Sure, the process is, you nominate them and we vote them in. And mayor nominated it, and we decide to vote it, and that's the process.
But your rationale for not thinking it's appropriate has nothing to do with our charter. In other words, there's nothing in our charter, which is our constitution, which prevents anyone from serving on a board, committee, task force, just because they're involved in a political campaign. There's nothing.
And there's nothing in our charter that obligates us to vote for them either.
Well, this is true.
That's true.
Yes. Okay, so there's a resolution on the floor. Please call the roll.
I need clarity.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. There's a motion to remove a name, Jackie Scott's name, from the resolution.
No, there's not a motion. You have, you've introduced a resolution to approve the slate of appointees to various boards and committees. During deliberation, a comment was made by Commissioner Sturman with regards to his objection to one of the board members, and he's requesting that that name be removed from the appointment resolution. So at this point in time, it would, there either be, have to be an amendment to the resolution to make that occur or move forward, but a motion is not on the table.
Okay, so-
Would I, would I make the amendment, request it, or Commissioner?
The Vice Mayor, who introduced, I believe the Vice Mayor introduced the-
So she would have to make the amendment.
Okay, so I should-
Or accept it.
Accept the amendment to remove the name from the resolution or amended?
So we have to be clear about what name.
So there's a friendly amendment being requested by Commissioner Sturman for you to amend your resolution to remove Jackie Scott for consideration in your resolution and that her nomination be made separately. Do you accept that friendly amendment?
I'd accept that friendly amendment.
Okay. Any other amendments to the resolution? All right, there being none? Go ahead.
Okay, so if there's a motion to remove that from the entire resolution, and you vote no, are you voting no on denying the entire other group of people that are being nominated?
Correct. So the amended resolution would be appointing the entire slate with the exception of Jackie Scott to the Charter Revision Board.
And what if you think that the mayor has the, has the opportunity to appoint whoever he wants to the board, and you want all, if you want the entire group of people that were just announced to us to be appointed, then what do you do?
I guess you'd vote, a second resolution is-
I'm asking the city attorney.
So there's two ways to approach it. If you do not agree with the resolution as amended, you would vote down the resolution and introduce the resolution in the form unamended after the failure of the first, or you can vote to approve the amended resolution and introduce-
You can introduce a second resolution.
A second resolution, a second resolution making the appointment for Jackie Scott.
Okay, I'm just talking to my colleagues here. This is a new direction for us to be taking. We have never, ever denied any of our appointees to a board or committee or task force. So you want to head down this path, go right ahead, but to me, this is just not the way to go. We have all respected each other's ability to appoint people to the boards, committees, task force, et cetera. This is highly irregular. I will not be supporting that motion because I think that each of us has the ability, and it's appropriate for us to appoint who we want to serve on behalf of our district. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other, are there any other comments with regard to the resolutions that have been introduced?
I do have one question, though.
Sure.
Mr. Spence, does this preclude that appointment coming back as a separate resolution at a separate time?
No, it can come back.
Tonight.
Right now, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so the resolution that we use to appoint is a form resolution that appoints the attachment, so we can use the same language and just have a separate attachment to that. So it's going to, this first resolution will be as amended, but he'll read the same title for both. Short answer, yes.
Okay, please call the roll.
And just to clarify, Vice Mayor, you introduced the resolution as amended with the friendly amendment of removing Jaclyn Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here and made a part thereof. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
No.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes. And that resolution's approved. Is there another, you want to introduce another resolution?
Yes, I would. I would like to introduce a resolution that appoints Jaclyn Scott as the mayor's appointee to the charter revision board.
Okay. Any further comments? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth, set forth in the exhibit attached here to and made a part thereof. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
No.
Commissioner Sturman?
No.
Commissioner Herbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that appointment is made. Moving on to R2. Ridiculous. Resolution levying the fiscal year 2024 operating millage rate of point six four zero zero, of debt service millage rate of the downtown, excuse me, debt service millage rate of point zero, excuse me, the debt service millage rate of zero point four zero six five of the Downtown Development Authority of the City of Fort Lauderdale. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Any comments or questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, levying an ad valorem test for fiscal year 2023, 2024, on behalf of the Downtown Development Authority of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida pursuant to Chapter 205 dash 346, laws of Florida. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R2 is approved. R3, a resolution accepting the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee's 2023 Affordable Housing Incentive Report and authorizing the submission to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
I just want to make a couple of comments. Does anyone else have any comments with regard to this? I just want to point out that there are two concerns that I have with regard to the report. And one is, we heard this afternoon in the presentation with regard to ancillary units that, that are being proposed as recommendations. It is a slippery slope. I think Commissioner Sturman, I mean Commissioner Herbs brought it out. You know, the, we have to, we have to, if we're going to allow for ancillary uses, we have to make sure that that's not going to be an opportunity for others to start a, a vacation rental opportunity. And let me tell you how it would work. So you have the main house, and then you say the ancillary use cannot be used for vacation rental, even though we're not allowed to deny vacation rental uses on property by state statute. But let's say we somehow figure it out that we can. So the owner of the main house now moves into the ancillary use addition and rents their main house as a vacation rental. So if we came up with an ordinance that said you can't, the ancillary use cannot be used for vacation rental, the owner moves into that and then they rent out their main house to get around the rule. So however we come up with any restrictions regarding that, that ancillary use addition, we need to consider that, that scenario, which I know would be taken advantage of. Secondly, there's a proposal to eliminate the parking requirement in affordable housing projects. You cannot limit or eliminate the parking requirement. People still drive cars. And I caution city staff in promulgating any future ordinance with regard to that, that we cannot eliminate a parking rule because people still drive cars. I know some people take buses or scooters or bikes, but the reality is, where would folks park who live in an affordable housing project and there's no parking within the building? Where are they going to park? So something else to consider. But having said that, I just bring that to the attention. This is still an advisory report from the committee, so it's not, we're not passing an ordinance. And I just want to bring that to the attention of the, of staff as they're promulgating an ordinance to present in the future to the commission. Anybody else have any comments?
Actually, Mayor, I'd like to echo that. So there has been a trend in the years that I've been with the city to eliminate parking. And as somebody who's lived in several of the downtown buildings and has experienced the challenges of trying to park and trying to have guests come over, I will tell you that I strongly oppose any effort to eliminate parking within these buildings. I, I lived in New Riverland. You get one parking spot, even though you have a three-bedroom apartment and everybody has to valet when they come to the building. It's unrealistic.
Yeah.
And I agree with you. We need to maintain adequate parking. I, I know, sorry, I'm going to take a swipe at my, all my planner friends. I, I know that you like to live in a utopian world where everybody, you know, takes a scooter or rides a bicycle. It's not happening. Not in our environment, not today, not anytime soon, not in my lifetime. So let's make sure that there's parking for the cars we're all using.
If I may say something as well. Just want to say in regards to the Advisory Committee Ahab and the report that was given, I want us as a commission to truly look at it and see what direction we can go in to address and implement the incentives that have been given. I don't want it to just be a report that's recommendations, recommendations that are given and we do not look into it further to see how we can implement. That's my comment.
Okay. Any further comments? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Vice Mayor did.
Oh, she did. I'm sorry. Apologize. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, accepting the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee's 2023 Affordable Housing Incentive Strategies Report and authorizing the city manager to submit the Ahab report to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, delegating authority to the city manager to execute all documents necessary or associated with thereto and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R3 is approved. Again, I want to thank the members of the Affordable Housing Committee to, for all the work that you've done in putting this together, and we appreciate your commitment to our city. R4, resolution adopting Broward County Enhanced Local Mitigation Strategy. Anyone have any questions with regard to that? If none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, adopting the Broward County update of the multi-jurisdictional local mitigation strategy plan and providing for severability and an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R4 is now approved. R5, a resolution approving the termination of the inter-local agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and the City of Oakland Park for development approval, revenue sharing, and concurrent jurisdictional authority for development located within both jurisdictions. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the termination of the inter-local agreement for the development approval, revenue sharing, and concurrent jurisdiction authority between the City of Fort Lauderdale and the City of Oakland Park regarding the development of property more specifically described below in Exhibit A, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R5 is approved. R6 is deferred. R7, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale condemning the brutal, barbaric, inhumane, and unprovoked attack on the state of Israel by Hamas, supporting the state of Israel's right to defend itself, urging the President and Congress to provide emergency assistance to the state of Israel, and providing for severability and an effective date. I have several people who've signed up to speak. I'll call your names. I'll give you a couple of minutes to speak. Start out with you, Rabbi Kaplan, and followed by Ayel Peretz, and then followed by Jonathan Fish.
Mayor, may I just have a point of information before the speakers? I did submit this, and I would actually like to read into the record the resolution before we hear from the people who have been so patient here this evening. May I read this first?
It's, it's quite lengthy.
No, it's not. It's important, Mayor.
I would support Commissioner Glassman's request. I think it's, it's important.
Wow, you're supporting something Commissioner Glassman wants to do tonight. I'm shocked.
I actually like him. You would never know. Well, I asked the city manager to let me introduce it.
Go ahead.
Sometimes things fall by the wayside.
Go ahead.
I mentioned it.
Yeah, he mentioned it, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think I said what?
Yes, thank you. I am going to read this aloud into the record before we hear from-
Rabbi Kaplan, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but this is important. It's important before you all speak.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Calm down. Whereas, on October 7, 2023, on the Jewish Sabbath and during the Jewish festival of Simchat Torah, Hamas and aligned terrorists launched a massive attack on the state of Israel. And whereas, Hamas officially, the Islamic resistance movement, is a Sunni Islamist political and militant organization currently governing the Gaza Strip, Gaza, of the Palestinian territories, an area of land Israel captured in 1967 during a defensive war and from which Israel fully withdrew in 2005. And whereas Hamas is a United States-designated foreign terrorist organization which exercises complete control over Gaza. And whereas Hamas sent thousands of terrorists to infiltrate Israel from Gaza by land, air, and sea in a coordinated and planned attack against the state of Israel. And whereas this heinous assault took place just after the 50th anniversary of the start of the multi-front 1973 Yom Kippur War against Israel. And whereas news outlets have reported that upon entering Israel, these terrorists began slaughtering Israelis and abducting hostages from their homes on the street at a music festival in southern Israel. The slaughter included stabbing and shooting babies in their cribs, decapitating soldiers and innocent people, raping women, burning civilians alive, among other atrocities. And whereas, it has also been reported that since October 7, 2023, Hamas terrorists have murdered over 1,300 Israelis and counting, as well as visitors from nations around the world, and injured more than 2,700 others. And whereas Hamas and other terrorist organizations have reportedly taken over 150 men, women, and children hostage and are holding them against their will under inhumane conditions in Gaza. And whereas these attacks resulted in the loss of innocent lives, destruction of property, and destabilization of peace and security in the region. And whereas American citizens in Israel are among those murdered and captured by Hamas during this war. And whereas since 2005, Hamas has spent its resources and money not on helping its people, but solely, solely for its intended mission of destroying Israel and killing Jews. And whereas the Palestinians of the Gaza Strip are being hused as human shields, further demonstrating Hamas's lack of regard for its people. And whereas there are reports of many residents opposing Hamas's terrorist actions because of fear of Israeli retaliation, Israeli leadership has indicated its doing and will continue to do everything possible to reduce harm to uninvolved civilians in Hamas's attempt to protect its weaponry and leadership embedded in civilian structures such as schools, hospitals, and mosques. And whereas the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, is committed to the ideals of peace, security, and the well-being of all nations and their citizens. And whereas the City of Fort Lauderdale recognizes the sovereign rights of all nations to live in peace and security within their internationally recognized borders. And whereas in defense of Israeli and foreign citizens visiting Israel, Israel has begun targeting the terrorist organizations in Gaza, as well as providing increased protection within the state of Israel from further assaults. And whereas the City of Fort Lauderdale stands in solidarity with the victims of any form of terrorism, regardless of their nationality, religion, or background. Now, therefore be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Section 1, that the City of Fort Lauderdale hereby condemns in the strongest terms the attacks perpetrated by Hamas against the state of Israel. Fort Lauderdale supports the existence of Israel. Fort Lauderdale stands with Israel. Section 2, that the City of Fort Lauderdale strongly supports the state of Israel's right to defend itself against such attacks, including, but not limited to, taking all necessary actions against terrorist organizations, all necessary actions to protect itself and its citizens and visitors, and all appropriate action seeking the safe return of the hostages taken by Hamas and other affiliated terrorist organizations. Section 3, that the City of Fort Lauderdale expresses its condolences to the families of the victims and hopes for the swift recovery of the captured. Section 4, that the City of Fort Lauderdale calls upon all parties in the region to work towards a peaceful resolution to the ongoing conflict and to refrain from actions that exacerbate tensions, perpetuate violence, and expand the war to other fronts. Section 5, that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the President of the United States, United States Department of State, the Israeli consulate in Miami, Florida, and to our local representatives in the United States Congress. Section 6, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption, and I'm hoping adopted this 17th day of October 2023, to be signed by our mayor, the Honorable Dean Jay Trentalas.
Thank you, Commissioner. Rabbi.
I have lived in the City of Fort Lauderdale for going into my 25th year and have had the opportunity to be present at many a commission meeting. Never have I felt this sense of pride. And so I have come here to thank our city commission. I have come here especially to thank our mayor, each one of you here, for supporting Israel. And especially, I know that Steve put a tremendous, tremendous amount of work into this. I want, I want just to ask everyone for a moment, I believe we are in a room where people have moral clarity as represented by our incredible city, but I want you for one moment, and we can keep this moment silent, to imagine your own child being held hostage, to imagine your own father or mother or grandmother being held captive, to imagine that in this moment you are grieving the loss of your infant child. Because the attack that unfolded, yes, on Israel's soil really unfolded in every free neighborhood of this universe. And that is the moral clarity that every human being needs to have at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. Ayel Peretz, followed by Jonathan Fish, followed by Yaniv Cohen.
So first of all, thank you, everybody, for the opportunity, which I wish we didn't have to have. This past week, needless to say, was a very difficult week for anybody with a relationship or connection to Israel in particular, but as a human being in general. I believe that what we are facing and what we're seeing today is not a dispute about land, but- not a dispute about land, but as the rabbi mentioned, it's about our moral ground, who we are as people. And as part of being a Western society, as part of being the people that we are that live today in America, in Fort Lauderdale, in a place that is comprised of various communities, that these communities comprised of people, real people, individuals, in the same fashion that the victims in Israel. We all share a bond, and the bond is our moral responsibility to one another and our moral responsibility here in the U.S. to speak. And to speak and not to accept evil and not to accept murder for any reason and not to accept rape for any reason and not to accept prosecution, abuse, and terror for any reason. So I've sat in front of this committee many times for a lot of reasons. Typically, it's about trying to put bricks and mortar. Never have I imagined that I will be in front of this committee for something like this. But throughout my work in the city of Fort Lauderdale, I learned that there is an amazing leadership here, very unique individuals that before anything are human beings with, you know, strong moral fiber. I may not agree on everything all the time with every commissioner. It's not the point. But in the core of things, in the heart of things, I want to make sure that I express my utmost gratitude and appreciation and respect to what is happening here tonight because not everybody is speaking up. Not everybody is saying or reading from a document like this what I listened to, what I just listened to. We've seen just today in the media, in other places, people describing what happened as exhilarating and exciting, a professor in Cornell. We've seen in universities celebration of death. And to me, being a part of Western society, this is unacceptable. Nobody, nobody should accept that. So I thank you. I'm humbled here standing in front of you. And my voice is shaking, so it's not, and I'm trying to gather my strength to speak. So thank you for everything you're doing. I appreciate it and the community appreciates it. Thank you.
Jonathan Fish, followed by Mr. Cohen, followed by Ricky Kopstein.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners. And thank you everyone for who came today. I wrote a little speech and I'd like to read it. Last week was supposed to be our joyful holiday of Simchat Torah, marking the end of the Jewish High Holidays. Jews around the world were supposed to dance with the Torah honoring our enduring relationship with our Creator, stories and traditions. Instead, a significant number of terrorists perpetuated the largest massacre against Jews since the Holocaust. Hamas terrorists who have no respect for the sanctity of life slaughtered, beheaded, raped, and burned alive more than 1,300 civilians in cold blood and kidnapped more than 200 hostages back to Gaza, including babies, children, women, and elderly people, simply because they were Israelis and Jewish. As a Jewish person, we believe that man was created in the image of God. The senses, feelings, and values that we have are just a small hint of who God is. He also gives us free will where we can choose good or God forbid evil. This past Friday, the head of the Hamas organization called for a national day of terror against the Jews worldwide. This fight has nothing to do with land. It's a clear fight of evil against Judeo-Christian values of tolerance and freedom. It's well known that the leadership of Iran is not only focused on Israel, but focused on America and the entire Western world as well. They are very clear about their intentions. If these extreme terrorists get their way, the Jews will only be the first. Let me quote Pastor Martin Numbler, a German pastor during the Second World War, and I quote. He said, "First, they came for the communists, and I did not speak out because I was not a communist. Then they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me. The only thing necessary for evil to triumph in this world is that good men and women do not speak out." As President Yitzhak Rabin was declaring, "We are not alone in this war. We are fighting the war as part of a family of nations, of all those who seek justice, peace, and freedom against an enemy that has proven that humanity and inhumanism are its enemy." Now that evil is clearly exposed with these atrocities, let's not negotiate with evil. Let's stand up together against evil and speak out. Let the people of the world know that wherever evil raises its head, it will be destroyed and not have any resurrection. I'd like to thank you, Mayor and commissioners, for really introducing this resolution. And I want to follow to what Ayel said and the rabbi, and I'm humbled to stand here with you today who really took the time to stand up for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen, followed by Mr. Kopstein, followed by Mr. Luck.
Well, I will say when I came here today, I did not intend to speak, but since I wrote my name and I said I will...
You're stuck. You gotta speak now.
I gotta speak up and it's important enough. I will I will make it short. I will not repeat what was already said, but as Jewish, as Jewish people around the world, especially in the U.S., living here, this does not only affect the people of Israel. It affects us as Jewish over here. So this last Friday, when this was the day of rage, I don't know how many kids, at least of my friends, did not send their kids to school because they felt a sense of loss of security. And I can tell you, it's it's not a few, it's a lot. Trying to explain my daughter, she suddenly says, you know, I don't want to stay at home alone because she's scared and she's young. And I have to explain to her all these atrocities that happen. So this affects us as Jewish, the Jewish people in general, and our sense of our sense of security and I think every human being in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Ricky?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm gonna reach for my phone, sorry. Mayor and commissioners of Fort Lauderdale, I stand here today with a heartful of gratitude for your unwavering support to Israel. When I heard you say that speech, every part of my body felt warm from the hate that we're hearing all the time. Thank you, like from the bottom of my heart. This country, even though I'm British, holds a special place in my heart as both a Florida resident, a U.S. citizen, a UK citizen, and an Israeli citizen. That you don't find that often.
Must be easy for you to get through passport control.
Exactly. Your support has given me and my family a safety that we did not feel in my feel in our native Great Britain. We were all forced to leave lack of support and feeling unheard and feeling like a minority. I vividly remember, and I actually look back on those emails today, and nothing has changed. To messages I sent in 2010 to my local MP when they were accusing and mistreating, they're accusing Israel of mistreating the Gaza citizens. And I felt all that frustration by the corrupt nature of my country and its willingness to believe the propaganda. Nothing has changed today. Today, the BBC are refusing to describe Hamas, who organized the butchering and abduction of almost 2,000 citizens, and I would like to correct you, 199 children, women, are being held hostage right now. We have these pamphlets that we're hanging hanging out. The saddest part is I have a pile in my car when we get notified of who died. Like a pile that we can't pull out. We don't know whether to pull them down or not because we're just hearing all these stories. These are babies, grandmothers, children, disabled. These guys have no mercy. And instead, on October 7, as terrorists, what they did to us on October 7, BBC have insisted to refer them as militants and won't call them terrorists. Even a BBC reporter quit, a Jewish guy, because he couldn't, he couldn't even stomach it. As a family of 11, including my parents and siblings, all but one left the UK in search for a better life and greater support for Jewish people and Israel. It pains me to see how my predictions about the state and my homeland where I've come from have passed. I'm I'm so terrified for my one sister who's still living in London. I don't even want to show you these text messages as I was sitting here that I'm getting from her. Friends are getting shot at, calling every name on, they don't feel safe there. I never felt safe when I lived there. They are not as fortunate as me. As they don't feel safe at all. Where just a few days ago, 50,000 people walked the streets of London where I was brought up on, saying gas to Jews, rape the babies, and nobody, nothing happened. Just to paint you a picture, my baby brother is now currently fighting on the front lines of Israel. After he hears the stories coming out of London, he told her, "I feel safer on the front lines than you. At least I have protection." This is not the same country that my ancestors fought in and died in in both the First and Second World War. From the bottom of my heart, as a Florida resident, I am so thankful today to stand here and call Florida my home, to have the support of this city behind me and for my daughter as well, who was actually born here in Broward County. But today, I'm going to stand here before you with a heartful of gratitude for all you have done to make me and my family feel safe and supported. Your support means the world to us and for all the Jewish people. And we will be forever grateful for all you have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Luck? You here? Oh, there you are. How are you?
Doing all right, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. It's unfortunate that to come back under these circumstances, but I've noticed your support for the Jewish community and I wanted to say thank you. I am a resident of Fort Lauderdale. I also do want to note that I'm also here for another reason. I'm the representative for our statewide elected official, Florida Chief Financial Officer Jim Petronas. And I have a proclamation that I would like to read on his behalf. Whereas on Saturday, October 7, 2023, in an act of war, hundreds of terrorists infiltrated Israel at several locations and at the same time massive rockets barrage were launched at Israel's territories. And whereas this heinous act constitutes a far-reaching terrorist attack on Israel's civilians in the midst of the Jewish festival of Simchat Torah, when hundreds of thousands of Israelis were on their way to synagogue to celebrate the holiday and Shabbat in their community. And whereas thus far over 1,400 people, mostly civilians, have been murdered in Israel, another 3,800 have been reported as wounded and over or nearly 200 Israelis have been classified as missing or captives. And whereas the state of Florida, in home of roughly 650,000 Jews, the third-largest Jewish community in the United States. And whereas the state of Florida has signed historic legislation that prohibits Florida from investing in companies that discriminate against Israel, combat antisemitism in our state, and strengthens and supports Florida's Jewish community. And whereas I, CFO Petronas, have worked to defend Florida's Jewish community and have fought to strengthen and solidify Florida's steadfast and unwavering relationship with Israel. And whereas the state of Florida adamantly denounces these outrageous acts of violence and asks other states to follow Florida's lead in condemning Iranian-backed terrorism. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Chief Financial Officer and the State Fire Marshal of the state of Florida does hereby strongly support the nation of Israel, who stands unequivocally with the Jewish community. In testimony whereof, the Chief Financial Officer, the state of Florida, has hereunto subscribed his name on the 10th day of October 2023. And I'd like to make one last note to the general public and community around the world. This is quoted by Martin Luther King. "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? There being none, has the resolution been introduced? Would someone like to do, it's been introduced by Commissioner Glassman? Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, condemning the brutal, barbaric, inhumane, and unprovoked attack on the state of Israel by Hamas, supporting the state of Israel's right to defend itself, urging the president and Congress to provide emergency assistance to the state of Israel and providing for severability and an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Just one note that I would like the public to know, and this is really important. We also have to say prayers. We actually have a Fort Lauderdale fire rescue captain, Jason Friedman, who just a few days ago left Fort Lauderdale to serve in Israel and work with those first responders. And we should definitely also include him in our thoughts and prayers. And I wanted to thank him, although he probably can't hear me now. But everyone is thinking of you and the incredible, incredible work that you're doing now in Israel in representing Fort Lauderdale. Yes, my vote is yes. Thank you.
And Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that is approved. Thank you all for being here tonight and your patience for staying with us into the evening. We appreciate it. PH 1, Public Hearing Amending the Amended Housing and Community Development 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan for a Community Development Block Grant. Do I have to open and close public hearing, Mr. Spence?
You do.
Okay. No one has signed up to speak? Would someone like to move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll to close public hearing.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed on PH 1. Someone like to... Is it a motion?
It's a motion.
It's a motion. Someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anyone have any comments or questions? There being none, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and PH 1 is now approved. PH 2, it's a public hearing, quasi-judicial resolution approving a waiver of limitations at 848 Northeast 20th Avenue for the installation of One Finger Pier. Do we have to do disclosures on this?
Yes, Mayor, and I apologize for that language not being part of it.
It's okay. I'm just keeping you honest here. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
Trying to recall.
No, probably not. Probably not.
Look at these.
Vice Mayor?
That would be no.
No.
Is that a no?
That's a no.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
No.
I have none. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
And Commissioner Sturman?
None.
This is in District 2, okay. One person has signed up to speak, Priscilla, this is in favor. Where are you? In favor? You're a guest. Would you like to come up and speak? Actually, two people have signed up to speak. We have, um, we have Priscilla Geronovich and Catherine Moyer. Can't, I can't really. Moyer, okay. Penmanship.
So if you could just do a slideshow format, and then what I'll do is, oh, I can.
Well, how long is this going to take?
I'll try to keep it under two minutes.
Okay.
It's gonna be quick.
I'll give you three.
It gotta be like full focus right here.
Go ahead, get started.
Okay, all right. So I live on 20th Avenue. I'm an advocate for 20th Avenue. And I am speaking against this because 20th Avenue is being abused by all of these waivers that are being given to these boats and yachts and everything else that are being stuffed in 20th Avenue. And I'm going to show you why. So. Okay, so I'm going to start with secondary issues, which is with, there's continuous waiver violations going on. With every waiver that's given, there's violations going on. There's ongoing presence of marine related trucks in work that are on 20th Avenue. And there's significant risk to life and property due to more and stronger hurricanes as a result of climate change. So let me, let's go through this. So waiver violations. In regards to utilization of the waterway, there's an example. There's a 100 foot yacht and it's using 37% of the waterway. In this case, very interesting docking going on right there with that yacht and the boat that's now perpendicular to it. It's still like that. It's been that like that for ages. That one is utilizing 38% of the waterway. In this case, another 38% of the waterway has been utilized. In this case, 42% of the waterway is being utilized in violation, I'm, I'm assuming of the waivers that have been given out. There are other malfeasance going on. This happens to be in the RSA area of the, of the street. You've got 200 foot yachts with different owners that are parked at the same house. And in this other case, we've got yacht chartering going on at a residential house as well. So the reality is after the waiver is given, anything can happen, and it does. And it's been going on for years and the property owners are never cited. Ongoing presence of marine related trucks and work, this is all recent photos that I took. So there they are doing their work. Is there no volume?
Are you saying that this is commercial activity taking place or just someone having their boats fixed?
It's all commercial. It's all commercial. And on the, in the residential area, up and down the street, it's a nightmare.
So this applicant, Mr. Jeffrey, I think his name is, is saying he's running a business?
Uh, well, so the street is divided into, part of it's RSA and part, part of it is a situation where there are businesses. But the bottom line is, is that these waivers are given, there's constant violation of the waivers. And I'm, I'm trying to show the activity that's going on. And even though these are businesses, they are disruptive to the street. This is, now, remember, this is just the secondary issues. There's a primary issue that you all need to be aware of. Okay, is there, is there volume now? Okay. So there's a video on the right. These guys are doing painting, spray painting on the back of the boat over the water, which is an environmental issue in addition to a, uh, not ideal for 20th Avenue. So this is another homeowner, this is fun. Got the guy on the right, he's doing the waxing on the boat. They got two, they have two boats, look at that parked in front of the property. So he's got, the other guy. Okay, so then there's the trucks, the marine trucks that are parked and the fueling going on. And more marine activities going on with the yachts and the other boats. Okay. Thirdly, there's significant risk to life and property due to more and stronger hurricanes as a result of climate change. So in three tenths of a mile on 20th Avenue, there's at least 28 boats that are greater than 50 feet alone. Many are over 100 feet in mainly a residential area. Okay, I am certain that, um, Fort Myers had all the piles in place that they're supposed to have in place, had all the docks in place that they're supposed to have in place, especially in the marinas. Let's look at what happened to Hurricane, as a result of Hurricane Ian. Okay, that's Marina right there. So hurricane comes, little bit of damage is going to go on 20th Avenue. Okay, not to mention fuel spills and illegal sewage release, homes utilized with sheds for yacht maintenance and depression of real estate values and therefore property taxes. Okay, now this, real quick, let me discuss the primary issue, which I've never brought up in the past. I've spoken to the commission in the past, not all of you, but I have. It's detrimental to the public's use of the waterway, and this is why. So it's a unique situation. Where that purple box is, is 20th Avenue and the waterway in question. There's six public access boat ramps in Fort Lauderdale. As a whole, as far as I was able to identify, six public access boat ramps in Fort Lauderdale. Very small amount. Four out of the six boat ramps are positioned on the Middle River, north of Sunrise Boulevard. So in order for all of those little boats, those for the public, with their little boats that have to go underneath that bridge on Sunrise to come out to other waterways, go through the canals and enjoy the water, they have to go down that strip. All right? There are eight personal watercraft rental companies on Middle River, either north of Sunrise Boulevard or just south.
All right, you know what? We're kind of going, you've been, it's been like six minutes now, so.
Okay, so, so.
So can we summarize?
Yeah, so to summarize, um, okay, here's all the activity. Here's the people, they're pushed, because all these boats are there, they're pushed out into the middle of the waterway with their kayaks and everything else and their dogs and their paddle boards and so forth. Here's a guy with his two year old kid trying to make it back to the rental thing because all those yachts are there, he can't go to the, the water's edge. So waivers allowing more boats and larger boats are, create risk for the public. So there's no benefits in the neighborhood, dangerous for small boaters and non-motorized watercraft. Does not support the advance for Fort Lauderdale 2040 Comprehensive Plan, especially as it pertains to goal number one. Be a community where persons of all ages are able to take, partake, able to partake in fun and, and a healthy lifestyle. This waiver is solely for an individual for financial benefit. For them to put 63 foot boats, probably will be larger because you can see how they just waiver, they get their waiver and suddenly it's a 100 foot boat. And so it's going to be further, it'll be further.
Okay, so let us, let us conclude. All right, great. Thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you. Priscilla, that was you. Catherine?
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. I can't speak for everyone who lives on the Middle River, but for this project specifically, we are following all the rules and regulations and are within the codes that have been laid out by the city and environmental agencies. So if there's specific questions you have, I can answer those.
Do you, do you own this property?
No, I'm representing the owner of the property.
Okay, are you an attorney?
No, I'm Environmental Consulting Group.
I see. Okay, does anyone have any questions of Catherine? There being none, thank you. So the Marine Advisory Board recommended approval, correct?
11 to 0.
Yeah. Okay, um, this is in District 2. Commissioner Glassman, do you have a recommendation?
I, I have some comments. First of all.
You know what? I'm sorry. No one else has signed up to speak? And anyone wish else, anyone else wish to speak on this item? Can I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman? Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trental.
Yes, public hearing is now closed. So, um, yes, Commissioner Glassman.
So Priscilla has spoken to us in the past. I'm not necessarily sure about this prison commission, but before, yes. And she makes good points all the time. The problem is that we're not making changes to code. Right, and also enforcement. But I think that we need to really look at, in fact, I'm going to have someone from my office contact you because someone has already notified us that they want to work with you on some approaches to this. So Erica from my office is going to reach out to you and we're going to, going to hook you up with that. But it is, it's, it's, it's an issue. Again, it's hard when the Marine Advisory Board knows, they read everything, they go through everything, and they believe that everything has been followed. So that's, that's the conundrum that we're in. But I, I think these are excellent points. I wish that we could look at a lot of them and figure this out and maybe revisit what we are doing in conjunction with enforcement. Thank you, mayor.
I think that this whole problem is enforcement. We have the rules in place, okay? And when I see commercial activity taking place there, painting and sanding and, and polishing, you know, we made it very clear, when I used to be District Commissioner, this would come up again and again, and we always talked about enforcement. So, Mr. City Manager, I would ask you to direct our code enforcement department to really pay more attention to what's going on there. And Priscilla, do you call code enforcement when you see a violation? Would you mind calling, would you?
I reach out to when it's environmental issues, yes, but I'm not directing, I reach out to code and actually call that and scream stuff to me on occasion when there's been very egregious activity.
Okay, all right. So it's not your burden to do that. I'm just asking if you have, that's all. Okay, would someone like to introduce a resolution?
Introduce.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? There being none, um, please call the roll.
And Vice Mayor, that's for approval?
That's for approval.
I don't want to vote for approval, so do I say, um,
Well, you can, you can, you can, you can vote against it.
Yes, I can vote against it. So for the way it's written.
She's introduced a resolution for approval.
Okay. A resolution to the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to Section 47-19.3E of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations and from the limitations of ULDR Section 47-19.3C to permit 848 Northeast 20th LLC of Florida Limited Liability Company's installation of one finger pier extending a distance of 48.4 feet from the property line into the waters of the Middle River, located at 848 Northeast 20th Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida 33304, and more particularly described below, subject to certain terms and conditions and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
No.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
And I, I have to vote yes because I do believe that it really is by the book. So yes.
A yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Trental.
Yes. Okay, that resolution is approved. OFR 1, First Reading of an Ordinance Amending the City Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, Parking Zone Requirements, so forth and so on. Someone have, no one signed up to speak? Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
Been introduced. Any questions? If none, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida's Unified Land Development Regulations, specifically amending Section 47-20.2 of the ULDR entitled Parking and Loading Zone Requirements to clarify the different types of residential uses and alphabetize the uses in Table 1 Parking and Loading Zone Requirements, amending Section 47-20.5 of the ULDR entitled General Design of Parking Facilities to add regulations regarding drive aisles for the different types of single family dwellings, dwellings that include two units and clusters, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and providing an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trental.
Yes, and that's been approved on first reading. Moving on to OSR 1. This is the second reading of an ordinance to amend the City of Fort Lauderdale, Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, Table of Dimensional Requirements, Single Family Dwelling Attached Cluster to Add Minimum Building Separation Dimensional Requirements Provide for Consistent Regulations in Various Zoning Districts and to Require Easements Along the Property Line of Cluster Developments to be Unobstructed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance has been introduced. Does anyone have any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida's Unified Land Development Regulations by specifically amending the following sections. Section 47-5.32, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RD 15 and RDS 15 districts. Section 47-5.33, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RC 15 and RCS-15 districts. Section 47-5.34, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RM 15 and RMS-15 districts. Section 47-5.35, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RML 25 district. Section 47-5.36, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RMM 25 district. Section 47-5.37, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RMH 25 district. Section 47-5.38, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RMH 60 district. And Section 47-18.9, entitled Single Family Dwelling Attached Cluster to Add Minimum Building Separation Dimensional Requirements Provide for Consistent Regulations in Various Zoning Districts and to Require Easements Along the Property Line of Cluster Developments to be Unobstructed, Providing for Conflicts, Providing for Severability and Providing for an Effective Date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trental.
Yes, and that OSR 1 is now approved on second reading. OSR 2, Second Reading of an Ordinance to amend the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations Regarding Single Family Dwelling Attached Townhouses to Require Easements Along the Property Lines of the Townhouse Developments to be Unobstructed and to Add Language Restricting the Location of Waste and Recycling Containers Used for Townhouse Dwelling Units. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
No one has signed up to speak. Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Section 47-18.33 of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations entitled Single Family Dwelling Attached Townhouses to Require Easements Along the Property Lines in Townhouse Developments to be Unobstructed and to Add Language Restricting the Location of Solid Waste, Yard Waste and Recycling Containers Used for Townhouse Dwelling Units, Providing for Conflicts, Providing for Severability and Providing for an Effective Date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trental.
Yes, and OSR 2 is now approved on second reading. Mr. City Manager, is there any further business to the commission?
No, there is none.
No additional items? Okay. This meeting is adjourned. We'll move on to the conference meeting and, and, and have commission reports. We'll start with Commissioner Herbst. Commissioner Herbst?
Thank you, mayor. As, again, not my habit to raise a lot of issues during commission reports, but there is one I do want to bring up. And so there was a letter that was published the other day, mayor, and it was from you and the city manager to Monica, Broward County Administrator, Monica Sparrow.
Yes.
So my, my primary concern here is that in reading this letter, it gives the appearance that this was something that was a commission direction. If it was a letter from you, signed by you, I would be comfortable with that. Not that I necessarily agree with everything that's in the letter, but with the city manager signing off on this letter, it conveys to the county that this is an official representation of the commission, which it's not. And I just, I don't think that we should be taking a stance with our county partners that is, I, I think, a little strong without this having come to the commission for us to consider and, and opine on. I would have liked this to have been something that we discussed during the conference meeting, get a consensus before. meeting, get a consensus before we go ahead and send a letter to our partners over at the county. So I just want to be clear that this doesn't represent my position, and I don't want the county, because I've been getting angry phone calls from county commissioners saying, you know, why did the city commission adopt this perspective? And I said, we didn't.
Can you give me an example of what you disagreed with? That might be helpful.
I don't like the idea that where it says here, for example, this is a slipshod job that fails to provide anything resembling a complete picture. That's pejorative language. It's harsh. I understand the point you're trying to make, but I would not necessarily have agreed with how this is being conveyed. The bottom line from my perspective, Mayor, is that when the previous commission voted on this a couple of years ago, the conclusion was that the tunnel is the preferred local option, but that didn't preclude the other options. We're seem to be moving in the direction that the tunnel is the only option that the city commission is willing to agree to, and I don't think that's the stance. I think it very important that we get something done. I agree with you that I believe that the tunnel is a preferred option. I do think it's better for our community. I've been consistent during my campaign and ever since then that I think it's a better option for the city in the long term. But at the end of the day, I think the best option is the one that gets done. Done is better than perfect. And if it doesn't prove to be practicable to get the tunnel done, I don't want to slow down the process. This is very important, not only for Fort Lauderdale, but for the county and our neighboring cities, you know, on the north and south sides of the river that would like to complete the commuter rail line. So I think it's imperative that we continue to move forward with this, even if it winds up with a solution that is not optimal in terms of what we'd like to see, but gets the job done. And I don't want to convey to the county that we are not willing to consider any other options, because personally, I am willing to consider the bridge as an option, even though it's not my preferred choice. And I think that was the position of the prior commission when we modified, when they modified, the resolution that was adopted at the time. I know certainly the commissioner that I replaced was kind of forthright in the idea that done is better than perfect, and we want something over or under the river, and it needs to be something that we could afford.
All right, so let me just, perhaps if I put it into context, it might be helpful. I know we had planned to have a conference item next month so that we could bring the commission up to date on the efforts that have been made to try to move forward on the locally preferred alternative and the commuter rail system. But events occurring as they had, they sort of caused us to have to take some action, and let me explain why that occurred. So I agree with you that we should always look to compromise when we can, as long as it does not compromise the quality of life of our community and the efforts that our community are trying to make going forward in building a sustainable and resilient downtown. When the idea of a commuter rail system was first proposed several years ago, the City of Fort Lauderdale was excluded from the conversation, and it was only by accident in a meeting unrelated to the commuter rail issue that I was present at, that it was disclosed that there would be some kind of commuter rail system through our city, and it would require a bridge to be built over the new river. So I asked, well, how would that bridge look? And it turns out that they would require a bridge to be built right through the middle of our city, 50 feet tall, and it would probably be about at least two to two and a half miles through the middle of our city. So when looking at a 50-foot bridge through the middle of our city, you know, it became difficult for me to accept, and the commission as well, that we wanted to build this wall through the middle of our city. First of all, it would continue to cement the divide between neighborhoods, which is contrary to the Biden administration's attempt to try to reconnect neighborhoods. And furthermore, it would detract from the quality of life of those living in Flagler Village and those south of the river who had, you know, invested tens of millions of dollars in new construction and future development to try to avoid having an interference in their quality of life. So this conversation kept going forward, and, you know, this commission is on record of preferring a tunnel. So is the Downtown Development Authority, so is the Broward Workshop, so is the Broward Alliance, and so is the Chamber of Commerce. Nonetheless, the county continues to proffer that the only solution would be a bridge. So in a recent meeting that we had about two months ago, we, meaning myself, the city manager, the mayor of Broward County, Lamar Fisher, Monica Sapiro, the MPO, and several other people involved in the room, sat down and said, hey, there's got to be some kind of compromise. So the county said, why not build a 25-foot bridge? A 25-foot bridge would allow the tracks to land right before you get to the station. You wouldn't have to rebuild the station that a bridge would require you to rebuild the entire Brightline Station. And the only thing that it would do was interfere with the traffic at Broward Boulevard. So let us build a 25-foot bridge and then build underpasses, build an underpass for Broward. I think you may recall my bringing this up at a previous meeting. Yeah, an underpass under Sunrise, an underpass under Sistrunk, another one at Andrews, and then another one at Davie Boulevard. I said, fine. I said, I'll bring it to the commission, and we'll see, you know, how that would work out, and we'd like to see some renderings, and perhaps we can come to a compromise, as long as we don't compromise or put at risk the quality of life of those living along the train tracks. So as it happened, I had a previously scheduled meeting with the Marine Industries Association, Phil Purcell in particular, and I said, in that meeting, I said, Mr. Purcell, you know, this is what we've discussed, and this is what we've agreed to. What do you think? He said, absolutely not. I would never accept the bridge under 40, maybe even 50 feet, and the 25-foot bridge would be, it's just a nonstarter for him. So I went back to the county, and I said, by the way, why did you propose the 25-foot bridge if you hadn't yet even consulted with Marine Industries? And they said to me, well, we'll get them to agree because they have to. I said, well, they don't have to do anything because they've already collaborated with the Coast Guard, and the Coast Guard sides with them, and therefore, we've seen evidence of this, it was in St. Lucie County, where they actually got Brightline to restrict the number of trains that they were going to be able to pass going from West Palm to Orlando. So this conversation for the last two months has gone back and forth and back and forth. I've continued to have conversations with USDOT, and they are in agreement that a bridge will never be built through the middle of Fort Lauderdale. Pete Buttigieg, the secretary, called me last week before he came down here today, which we had that conversation. And today, I was given the opportunity to meet with him, this was the reason why I had to leave at the conference meeting early this afternoon, to sit with him for about 15 minutes. I had a PowerPoint presentation as well as some bullet points to discuss with him, in which I sat in a room with him and his assistant, and we went over the plan again. And I think we're all on the same page, but the county just does not seem to be interested in even discussing it, until today. As a result of that letter, Commissioner, Monica Sapiro came up to me and said, we need to talk. And I said, I know we need to talk. She says, your letter has made us realize that we need to talk, that we need to come to some agreement here. So while I understand your concern that the letter was sent perhaps not in the normal protocol, but it did spur the kind of reaction that we needed as a city to finally get the county to come to the table and to realize that the US Department of Transportation is willing to discuss funding most of a tunnel project. And that's important because we're moving that forward, and February is a deadline by which we have to submit our application for funding of this tunnel and to be able to get most of it paid for by the federal government. I have to say that the city manager has spent hours and hours and hours with people trying to pull together a proposal, getting numbers together so that we can submit this application. So I know, I understand your position, and, you know, perhaps in the future, you know, I would bring that to the commission. But it was something that had to be done in a timely fashion. I don't think I would have had the time to bring it to the commission, and I would lose that window of opportunity to strike it at the moment when I needed to assert the position of the city. I don't think I misrepresented the city position overall. We are still on record of wanting the tunnel versus the bridge, and I think, Commissioner, we're going to get it. And I'm very excited to report that, but we're not there yet. And so I would appreciate the support of the commission going forward, and it's exciting because Fort Lauderdale will now be a city that can accommodate commuter rail and still be able to avoid the interaction of vehicular traffic. It would improve public safety, and it will take away the noise that we often hear from the train, and I just think it'd be a total game changer. So I appreciate your comments, and let's see where this will take us.
I, as they say, from your lips to God's ears. I hope there's a couple of billion dollars that comes falling out of the federal money tree and winds up here. Again, like I said, I agree with you fundamentally that I do think that a tunnel is a better option in the long term. One thing I would probably disagree with you on is when the project was first announced. I actually went to the first meeting on the commuter rail line in 2008. So that's when I attended the first one. So it's been on my radar for a very, very long time. This is something that's actually been in the planning for probably 20-plus years. It's a long time getting to where we are right now. It was originally, in fact, supposed to go from, I believe, Fort Pierce all the way down to Homestead was the initial.
That the original path?
That was the original proposal, right? Which really would have been an amazing game changer for traffic in the entire South Florida corridor. I do also have a question, maybe this needs to go to the city manager. So I have on my calendar a meeting for October 31st. Help me understand what happened with that. So I didn't have a meeting for October 10th, which apparently just took place. I did have a meeting for October 31st on my calendar, which now you told me is no longer a meeting that's taking place. So help me understand what's going on.
So the county asked us for a joint meeting for October 31st. We did a poll across the board. We did not get availability for everyone for October 31st.
Okay.
Number one. Number two, there were additional, our experts, we hired additional experts to review the report as well, Mooney, Lochner, and the White House report has many reservations, and the letter did mention some of those limitations from the report that was not done by an engineer, and it required a more comprehensive outlook. I gave, at the September 19th meeting, an update about the various reports that we have received and achieved so far, which you all have received a copy of. And as you directed, we were coming on the first week in November under conference to provide a comprehensive overview of where we are with the tunnel, and we felt that beyond that meeting, we can then have a joint meeting because that can give you enough time to review all reports, gather public input, and then therefore have a more purposeful and intentful meeting with the county as a joint meeting beyond the November 7th meeting. So yes, the October 31st didn't happen. Unfortunately, the county, we understand, took a position last week on the 10th that did not have any of our input. We did not know that they were having this meeting, and we were not even acknowledged by our partners, who we were paying half of the report for, that they would be discussing this matter and making a decision on it.
Was it an agenda item for the county? Was it a listed agenda item?
It was a workshop.
Was it listed as an agenda item or a workshop?
It was posted as part of their agenda, yes.
Well, then I recommend we shouldn't just worry about them not telling us about it. Meaning, we have government liaison people in our city staff, we have economic development people in our city staff. We should be monitoring those agendas, and if we see something that's going to be affecting us, we should make sure we have staff there. We shouldn't wait for an invitation.
Yeah, no, from this point on, we are certainly going to be looking at their agenda like a hawk. And make sure that your position as elected officials and what you all resolved, and this is Resolution 22-20, you all resolved that the tunnel was the best alternative for many reasons for the community. So certainly, we will make sure that happens. We will bring back November 7th a conference item, and we invite everyone to attend. That way, we gather even more public input for that purpose.
Okay, so my only request, and again, I've said it to you, so I'm not saying anything I didn't say to you in my email earlier. I don't know if this is for you or maybe for David Solomon, but when meetings get canceled that are on my calendar, you know, I need notification of that. So it's still sitting on my calendar. So I just, you know, need to get those things off. I don't want to be blocking out time. I'm rather pressed as it is, so if something needs to come off, I just, I want to know about that, because I've been anticipating having this meeting with the county and was unaware that we were not going to do it. So let's just make sure, again, that might be a David Solomon issue, because I believe the original invite was from him, may not have come through you, so I'm not sure how we go about doing that. But if things are not materializing, let's just make sure that we up here are notified of that, so we can clear our calendars.
We will do that.
Okay. Let's see. There was one other report, if I remember correctly. Isn't there a USDOT report on this? I don't, I believe there was another report.
No.
And I don't know if we have access to that?
No, so there are three reports that have been.
Well, that we commissioned, but is there one that?
So far.
That federal government did?
USDOT?
Yeah.
We just earned $974,000 on Friday, but that was an award that we're getting to study the tunnel further.
Okay. I thought there was, I was under the impression there was another report out there, not that we had done, but that was done.
No, in fact, the interesting thing is that we had applied for this grant to be able to supply the data and the necessary support for application that we do submit in February. And when I was at the US Conference of Mayors earlier this year, I sat with the fellow that was going to be making the grants, and I told him, I said, look, we need this money to, and he says, look, we're supportive of your tunnel. He says, we will get your grant. He said, this will help you with your application. So I was very pleased to know that the USDOT is actually, in that way, showing their support for the project going forward.
There's an FDOT report.
Maybe that's.
FDOT.
Maybe not a USDOT, FDOT.
FDOT, and we can certainly share that with you.
Okay, that's what it was. I misspoke, my apologies. Not USDOT, FDOT. Yep. Could you share that with us?
Absolutely.
All right. Yeah, no, I think that'd be helpful for me. So again, I'll leave it with two things. So Mayor, again, as you say, I would appreciate any time we're representing, you know, the commission's approach on something, let's make sure that the commission has an opportunity to vote on it. I would appreciate that, especially on something as significant and generational as this. I certainly want to be involved in a discussion. And I'll go ahead and leave it at that.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Beasley, I mean Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Want to give a report of some activities and meetings that I was able to attend. On the 5th of October, I had a conversation and meeting with Park and Rec, including Carl Williams, also city manager, regarding Carter Park and its improvement. We talked about the design team and the new design for these new Carter Park facilities. Also, there was conversation about lack of funds to actually go forward with the original design that was voted on. design that was voted on and vetted through the community. And the design had been scaled back. The conversation that we had, I made conversation with the city manager, letting it know that we do want to continue moving forward with the original plan that the city, excuse me, that the neighbors had discussed and had been approved for. Also...
So what happened there? What's the, how, to what extent was it scaled back?
I could share. So from the moment the, there was public input and concept to the point that there was a cost estimate available, the costs for construction escalated. And so at that point, because of the amount of funds available were fixed, then an alternative design was proposed.
Can, I mean, was it significantly increased? I mean, is there money somewhere else within the park bond money that we can draw from?
So we're looking at that. We're looking to see what other funds are available so that we can make it whole and bring it back. And we're working on that.
Okay. Good.
And that was the, you know, the conversation. We did come to agreement that we would look for additional funds to know where and how we could move forward. So we did have that conversation. So understanding where we are now and to be able to move forward. Also, on the 5th, I had attended the Broward League of Cities monthly meeting. It was held out in Tamaraq. Great event. Also, that very same day, I attended a community conversation that was sponsored and held by our new school, Broward County School Superintendent. It was held at West Pine Middle School. And it was a great opportunity. It was, there was actually three different events. And the one that I attended was designated for residents in the central part of Broward. So with that, they had an exercise where it allowed the parents and those who were attending to share about things that they thought the school board was doing at an excellent level, things that needed improvement. And then also suggestions were taken to improve activities and what is needed for the school board. It was a great opportunity. Attending the meeting with some of our state representatives as well. So it was a great opportunity to input and hear what our neighbors are well, are speaking about issues with our school board. Also, on Saturday, October 7th, I had the wonderful privilege of attending the call to be more families, Friends and Family Day. It was held at Oswald Park. I want to thank Warren for coming out. He attended, he mingled and also greeted the crowd. Want to thank him for coming out and supporting the event. Also, the foundation, they sent thank you to this committee, this commission, thanking them for the support and giving them some financial support needed to make the event a wonderful event. And it did not rain. It was a great day. It did not rain. On the 9th, I was able to meet with the Affordable Housing Authority Advisory Committee. That monthly meeting, I met with them, a part of that committee, preparing for the workshop that we were able to partake in today. And I was really excited with the output, the incentive report that was presented. We've already talked about it, but it was greatly put together, great input. And like I said before, I look forward to this commission, looking at it in further detail and seeing how we can implement some of the items or the items on the report. On the 10th of October, we, the mayor and I, we were able to attend the Coach Penders, Marcia Penders' street naming unveiling. It was a wonderful opportunity.
That was really nice.
The family was there. They were so humbled and grateful that the city recognized the works and the life of Ms. Pender. Great comments and great interaction with the principal at Dillard and then the neighbors who were there. So it was a great opportunity. I was so glad to know that this was an initiative that had been started and that we were able to see it through. And the sign is up. It's on 21st Avenue between Sunrise Boulevard and Panther Way.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor, can I just interrupt you for a second? I need a motion to extend the meeting time for another 15...
Motion to extend.
For how long? Another 15 minutes?
You want to make it 30, just to be on the safe side?
Okay, for another 30 minutes? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second? Please call the roll.
That's 2:11, I'm sorry, 10:30?
Correct.
10:30, yeah. 10:30.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, okay. Please proceed.
Okay, continuing with our report, also on October 12th, I had the opportunity to attend a national syndicated reality show there. The name of the show is Dining Divas. And they are doing a segment here in Fort Lauderdale. And they're going to and visiting different restaurants within our city. And they actually have started with restaurants within District 3. And this red carpet event, they called it, was held at Smitty's. It was taped and we'll be seeing more about this particular reality show.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Which channel is that?
I can't tell you which channel, but the name of the program is Dining Divas, a dining with divas.
I saw that.
And they've been around for, I think it's maybe like their fourth year. So they're popular and whenever I talk to, if I have a conversation about, there is someone in the room who has seen the show and they're familiar with it. So I'm really excited that they decided to choose Fort Lauderdale and then also highlighting restaurants in District 3. And it's my understanding that it will be expanded throughout the city overall. So we can look forward to that. Also, we attended the public meeting that was discussing the Lauder Trail design. And that was held at the Carter Park Gymnasium. And we had a really good turnout. We had a lot of people who came in. It was an opportunity where the neighbors could come in, look at the rendance, give their opinions. There was a slideshow. Also, there was an opportunity to even complete a survey. And staff was in place, did an excellent job, great presentation. And the majority of those who attended that opportunity, they were impressed with the Lauder Trail and how it will come through District 3. Also, the very same night, I've been busy on the 12th. I don't know what was going on on the 12th.
So he can see you.
Yes, 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 yes. He's there, listen, he's there with me all these occasions. Ribbon cutting ceremony. There's a new restaurant in town. I'm not sure if it's District 2 or District 4, but it's the Velvet Taco. It's at the corner of, it's 4? It's at the corner of Andrews and La Solas. And when they weren't able to get, I guess the commissioner wasn't available and they asked if I would come. And I did agree. And tacos, out of this world. If you like tacos, they're very good.
Andrews and La Solas?
La Solas, right. It's right near the Wharf. The Wharf, it's on the same side as the Wharf. And it's right on the corner. And the variety...
That's District 4, yeah.
Yeah.
I usually go to all of the District 2 events.
I try to go to all the District 2 events also.
It's okay.
But listen, we are a unified city, right? We stand in and help how we can, correct?
Yes, we can.
Don't listen to them.
So with that being said, really, like I said, the tacos, if you all don't know me, I'm a foodie, so I enjoy good food. And great menu, great combinations of tacos. So check it out. It was really nice. Also, want to share that on Saturday, October 14th, it was a continuation with the project Breast Strokes in history. It was a combination with neighborhood support. And this was an opportunity where community artists came together and they painted panels for the Cone Plaza on Six Trunk. The Cone Plaza is one of our historic buildings. And right now, it's kind of standing stagnant. It has some blight. And the idea of the panels that were painted, giving a story of the history of Six Trunk. There was panels for the doorways and the windows. And they, with neighborhood support, there was volunteers from Broward College. We were able to paint the building, put these panels in place. And the building looks remarkable. And the story is being told. So it was a great opportunity. A young lady, I must do better with names. I have a problem with names, but I'm getting better. But she's a senior at American Heritage. This was one of her ideas and she brought it to full fruition and did a wonderful job. And I really appreciate the time that she took. She reached out, like we said, to community artists and the story that was told. And she walked away with a lot of knowledge, understanding the history that she wasn't familiar with, living here and being born and raised in Fort Lauderdale. One other item that I want to share, oh, two other items. I met with Parks and Recs on the 16th, had an opportunity to discuss the upcoming events that will be held in District 3, citywide events. We know that we're preparing for the lightups, different cities. Lightup Six Trunk is December 1st. Also, Martin Luther King Festival and Parade, and then the Six Trunk Festival. So I met with Parks and Recs to come up with the, to hear the details and how we are progressing with the plans for those events. There is an issue, and you, everyone has heard me talk about this before, and it's regarding the lack of broadband opportunities in the Northwest. But also, really citywide, because we're hearing in different pockets in the city where there are issues with connectivity. And I'm suggesting and requesting that we look at doing a citywide assessment to see how we could address our broadband issue. We are, we pride ourselves on being a beautiful city, a city that live, work, and play. And we want to be able to have that opportunity wherever we go in the city, to have that connectivity to the broadband and internet services. So even when our visitors and tourists come into town, they won't have that, that lack in service.
Have we already started something like that, Greg?
We do have a grant by the Department of, it's the state. We did receive a grant for $700,000 to start a pilot. And they gave us the notification one year and gave us the money the following year. So we asked for an extension. And right now, that is in process. I'm going to ask...
A pilot to install broadband or a pilot to study?
To install broadband. Broadband level of connectivity. Is Chris Cooper here?
Yes.
No, well, we can...
Yeah, he's here, he's here.
He could perhaps provide an update on that.
But it's a pilot project in the Northwest, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So it's not a study, though, for the whole city?
No.
All right.
If you would like, he's available.
Chris, how are we moving along on installing broadband in the Northwest?
So we are moving forward with it. It was a program, I think it was from the State Department of Economic Opportunity. That name at the time, I think it's since changed. But to install some devices throughout some areas in the Northwest to provide a network of broadband availability in that area. We're going through environmental reviews. It's grant funded. There's some HUD funding available. So the ramp up to actually getting the devices out and installing them is pretty lengthy, but we're involved in that process now and moving forward, making progress.
Also with that, if someone can answer the question, in relations to the infrastructure bill that our president has in place, is there any available funds or grants that we could apply for broadband that will, you know, because you know I'm interested in the smart city component. We've had a small conversation about, you know, becoming a smart city. And however we can attain funding for that, I believe we should move in that direction.
If you'd like, Vice Mayor, we could bring back a conference item to give you a strategy for commission to adopt.
Yes, I would like that. Thank you. That's all I have to permit.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Wednesday, October 4th, I just wanted to say it was a really proud night for us to attend the state of the city. So thank you, Mayor, for letting everyone know in the city exactly what has happened this past year. And thank you to city staff for making all of this happen. But that was a really good night. I've heard a lot of really positive comments.
And the commission for...
And the commission. Well, you didn't let me finish. What a surprise. Okay, so moving along, Thursday, October 5th, had a good meeting with several folks from the county to again try and move this Breakers Avenue project off the dime. I'm hoping that some of the suggestions that came from the county will be able to be implemented and will be able to soon put a shovel in the ground on this project. I also attended on that day the fifth ribbon cutting for City Cave Float and Wellness Center at 625 East Sunrise Boulevard. Really nice facility. The gentleman that owns it is from Australia. They chose Fort Lauderdale for their first location in the United States. Tuesday evening, October 10th, really, really well attended and a lovely memorial for former Broward County Mayor Ken Keachell at the Pride Center. And I thought that was really well done. Wednesday, October 11th, I actually attended my first Solid Waste Disposal and Recyclable Materials Processing Authority meeting at some mouthful in Sunrise. But this is actually the authority that was created from the Solid Waste Working Group that I have served on for, I don't know, I guess about three years now. But this is the next step. This is the actual authority that will be working now very, very aggressively in dealing with how all of the municipalities in the county deal with disposal of waste and recycling. I believe there are only two cities in the county that have not agreed to participate, Papano Beach and Pembroke Pines. The rest are all on board, so hopefully we'll be able to accomplish something with that. On Wednesday, coming up, that's tomorrow, Flagler Village Civic Association meeting. On Thursday, I'll be speaking at the Lake Ridge Civic Association meeting. Wednesday, October 25th, a big day in our city. That's the 64th Annual Fort Lauderdale International Boat Show. I'll be attending the ribbon cutting for that, the La Solas Garage rooftop. Also, that day will be the 10th Annual Global Business Luncheon at Bahia Mar. That's always a very fascinating event where the marine industries brings just incredible speakers to talk about really creative and innovative things that are happening in the community. Also, that evening, Mayor, is your soiree at the Super Yacht Village. I'm sure you're working hard on making that a really fabulous event. And that's about it, except I did want to thank, I see Phil Thornburg is with us this evening, and he will be retiring shortly. I want to thank him for all of his years of service and for making the Parks and Rec Department, along with his staff, what it is today and how it has grown, not just with number of folks in the department, but also in stature and what has been accomplished. So Phil, I think you should be really proud of what you have done. And I just wanted to say thank you and wish you all the best. I want to wish you all the best in your next chapter and remind you that I was once retired for 10 years and then I lost my mind. So good luck to you and all the best, seriously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's it, Mayor.
Commissioner Sternman?
I actually have a few things to say. I know in the beginning, we had our one minute of silence at the beginning, but I'm just going to... just gonna bring us back to that moment, the, the attitude there and, um, seeing, you know, the presentation that you did on Israel, thank you, by the way, Steve, thank you very much for that beautiful presentation and the people and the stories, uh, you know, we might disagree on things, but it reminds us of, um, we really do have more in common than we have apart. It's okay to disagree, I know we bicker back and forth, Steve, but I'll say publicly, I, I do respect you, uh, we're actually friends, Dean, Pam, John, I consider each of you my friends, and we do have, uh, a lot more in common, we're all here for the same reason. Different ways to get there, but every one of us, uh, I, I truly believe is, is looking out for the city's best interests. It's okay to disagree, but I think we're all, we all truly have the city's best interests at heart. A few things I want to talk about, a little, uh, housekeeping here. I'd like to, uh, Dwayne, uh, advance the thing that we've been speaking about and tell us, uh, give you direction, but like, we're still in conference, so I guess this, we could give you direction technically, uh, if we want. Um, proceeding with adopting Robert's Rules of Order, uh, we spoke about that and we've known, you know, the, uh, charter review could deal with that, but I don't think we have to wait. Is there a mechanism that we could, uh, bring it forth, uh, next meeting or so?
Well, I've been kind of trying to follow that ever since-
Yeah, but we never adopted it and that was the whole issue, I'd like to actually formally adopt it as a resolution.
Um, I'll provide a memorandum with a, uh, draft resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Preparation.
Okay, um, a couple of things, uh, we're having a meeting tomorrow for, for my district in the downtown civic association at Stranahan House to discuss, um, some of the issues with the water main and the boiled water notice and the improvements we're doing, so I encourage everybody in the downtown civic association area to join us tomorrow at Stranahan House at six o'clock, correct? Six thirty, okay, that's six and a half fingers, okay, at six thirty, uh, we're gonna have another meeting-
But she told you six, so you'll be there by six thirty.
Exactly. You know me well, that's why I love you, Dean, you know me so well. Okay, we're having another meeting, uh, on this coming Monday, um, the, the location has just been secured, we're gonna be at Broward General Medical Center on the second floor, it's a second floor auditorium, uh, that's, uh, from six, six thirty, six thirty till about eight o'clock, uh, free parking at Broward General-
What is that for?
That's a, we're doing a, uh, infrastructure, infrastructure traffic, uh, um, we're gonna have, uh, Public Works will be there, I think Greg, you're gonna be there, Traffic I believe too, it's gonna be this coming Monday, that should be actually very helpful. Um, I'm gonna have a couple of other suggestions I want to throw out here, uh, some, actually, I should give credit, didn't want to take credit, but I have to give him credit, Michael Lambert's had spoken to, uh, myself and the city manager a few times about this, city managers seem to be very receptive about, um, you know, appointing a chief waterway officer. I mean, I know that a lot of these fall under different umbrellas, but looking at the scope and, and things such as clean waters, navigability, uh, seawalls, a whole bunch of things, I think it's really worth it to have one person, uh, that we, we have as a chief waterway officer, and, and Greg, we had mentioned that, okay, if you could look into that. Uh, Dwayne, I know on your way out, just one more question for-
He's not going anywhere.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, I mean, uh, but in that chair, um, we talked a few times, my, uh, community was asking about the tree ordinance, that seemed to be, uh, you know, six months ago, uh, trying to move along, is, I mean, how are we doing with that?
The, um, most recent draft has, has just gotten back to our office, uh, for review. Um, I'm gonna, it's, it's been a while, so I'm gonna have to, uh, go back and, and, um, see where we left off. I know that there was a, uh, interest group, uh, and, and, well, I don't know if it's in your district or not, but that has, uh, had con- constant, uh, uh, input in the process, um, and so, uh, quite frankly, I haven't been, um, directly in contact with them, I don't, not putting anyone else on the spot with regards to that, but yes, I do have a draft that, that we will-
I, I would like to, uh, move that forward, cause as we know, I mean, you know, in my particular district, and not only do the people really enjoy the trees, but as we heard earlier today, uh, the termites actually prefer District Four over every other-
Let's have a tree ordinance before the termites get rid of them.
You heard, I mean, they, they were naming one neighborhood after another, I mean, they're gonna be gone pretty soon, but no, I'd, I'd like to do whatever I can, I mean, to me it's a, it's a labor of love, protecting the tree canopy, it's so important. Um, I have two more quick things, um, Phil, um, there's a, there's an update on a, that, and Lauderdale Isles, I want, if you could come up for a little bit, I just want to get an update on something. Thank you. Okay, Phil, I want to apologize, I lied to you, I didn't bring you up there for that, I wanted, I mean, Steve already did, I just want you to have a mic so you could say thank you for your years of service, and, uh, if you want to say hi to every, I will talk about that, but actually, I, I heard, do, do you want to say, I, I mean, I, I can't thank you-
He's gonna use up all my time.
When I first met you here, we could extend for a few minutes, I'm gonna be, I have one more item and we're done.
I'm voting no.
Okay, um, is this any words of, of love?
Well, as you all know, I'm, I'm a man of few words.
Man of few words.
Very, very few words. But I would say it's been a great ride, it's, um, and I appreciate this commission and the commissions before you all, it's been almost 26 years, and, um, it's, it's not me, it's the staff, it's the department, it's the city managers I've worked for, the commission, the mayors I've worked for, I've had a lot of good friends here, it's gonna be, uh, bittersweet as I move on, but it's time to, uh, do something different, I'll, uh, probably not be a commissioner anywhere, I'll guarantee you that, but, um, we'll see what happens in the next chapter, but again, I, I really do appreciate everything, um, Greg's been wonderful to work for, it's tough to leave, but it's time to, uh, to move on, so again, thanks, thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Dean, I have two more things, we're getting to the end, and we'll be quick, but, Phil, thanks. Okay, uh, just, just want to give us an update, we had mentioned this earlier, on the Lauderdale Isles Community Center, um, there was the, uh, Lauderdale Isles Yacht Club, and I think, um, uh, the mayor had brought that up at one point, that was purchased by somebody, uh, underneath of us, we didn't get that, so we've been working with, actually, Phil, thank you, working with Phil, uh, is working with the city manager, uh, and parts on alternate options, including building a community center on the adjacent city land next door, and, uh, Greg, if you just want to, uh, word it to, or just give an update on, on how we proceed from here.
Yeah, so we met with, um, community stakeholders and also AECOM, which is our, um, owner's rep, and looking at, um, uh, determining what the cost estimates could be for the amount of funding that's available, uh, for the district, so, um, looking forward to bringing that back perhaps at a future conference to share, so that you could share that with the rest of the commission.
That'll be, and there's one last item, I mean, I hate to end on a negative note, but it's gonna be a, the tie into what John had said at the very beginning, um, I know that we were supposed to go, and, and Greg, I, I don't, uh, do a gotcha, we discussed this and I told you that we were gonna talk about this, so, so you could be prepared. We were supposed to be part of that discussion with the county, and I know that supposedly they say that they invited us a couple of weeks ago, and we said that we didn't, and you were gonna do some research about the fact that whether they did or did not invite us. You had some things that you're gonna share if you, if you want to. I mean, this is not a gotcha moment, it's just a-
Sure, so, so I checked with staff-
Yeah.
And we did not get invited, in fact, I called Greg Stewart, who is the one that furnished the, uh, vendor that we use for the joint report. This morning, um, I asked Greg Stewart why weren't we contacting, he says he didn't realize they were gonna talk about that, but yet he had a person there at the, the county commission meeting, and, um, you know, he, he did acknowledge that he should have told me and I should have been, um, I should have known, I should have been told by someone in the county that that was going to be discussed. Um, so I, 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 the last communication I have, uh, was from me to the county, letting them know, uh, even for October 31st, we are not ready, that was firm, and that was the last of it, and, um, it was very unfortunate, so, um, we do not have any communications from the county inviting us to that meeting.
And I will say something, and I, I toned this back in light of, uh, the, you know, the proclamation earlier today, I, Dean, I was upset, and I was upset about, I mean, I'm looking through here, and I was actually very upset, but like I said, um, putting it into perspective, I could, it, that, that anger has gone. I, I do take issue, and I'm not gonna break, uh, blow this out of proportion, I'm gonna, you know, just mention it in passing, but I do take issue, uh, um, putting out a, a letter to the county on our behalf as the city and having the city manager sign it, and it's like, no, he does work for the five of us, and it, it gives the impression that, no, we're not in the loop. We, I know, you, you gave some reasons and I'm not gonna, um, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but I, I, I do wish that if communications do go out on behalf of the city, that they do go out on behalf of the city, um, that, that, that is, you know, what John had mentioned, I do echo that sentiment. That being said, I think you have ten minutes before-
Eight.
Okay, I'm done.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. So, uh, uh, I, I just want to say the few of the things that I did, and we got a whole bunch of things happening in our city, uh, I was able to attend the FITC opening, the, that's the Florida International Trade, uh, uh, Conference that is held by the county, there were over, uh, 60 countries represented, I was able, I was asked to give opening remarks at that event, it's a great opportunity for the city to connect with, uh, a lot of its sister cities that were, that were represented there. And that same, uh, day, we had the State of the City address, uh, I want to thank all the people in the community, we had over 400 people attend, which I think is a great opportunity for the, uh, commission to, to, uh, you know, go over the, the accomplishments of this commission and, which have been many this past year, so, uh, I want to thank staff for the great production that was done and making that, uh, really a worthwhile venture. Um, it was, I just want to repeat the opportunity that, uh, the Vice Mayor and I had to go to, uh, to recognize Marcia Pinder, uh, just looking at that video, um, she was, uh, quite a mover and shaker in, uh, in her job as coach, and, uh, um,
Literally?
Yeah, she, um, she, it's a, it's a big loss for our community and, uh, but yet she lives on in the people that she influenced and served as a role model for, so we at least have that to re, to remind us. Uh, that same evening, I attended a vigil at the La Solis Chabad, and actually the night before, I attended a vigil, uh, at the Chabad on the Galt, uh, this was a vigil to, um, in support of Israel, the state of Israel, uh, the Israeli people, and, uh, and, uh, it was, uh, very, and Commissioner Sturman also attended with me at the Chabad on La Solis. Um, I think the one thing we both shared was the fact that we saw a lot of fear on the faces of people, and, um, it just made me realize how important it was that we need to protect the citizens of our community. Um, I also, uh, gave a proclamation to Michael Goodman at the Eat Your Heart Out Benefit, uh, this is a, an, uh, an organization that, um, helps homeless youth, and, uh, that was October 12th at the Galleria. I also participated the following day at the Realtors Annual Mayor's Breakfast, this was up in Deerfield Beach, um, several, about, I think, eight mayors from, uh, Eastern Broward County attended and talked about our cities and our history and our, and our involvement in politics. Uh, that same afternoon, I, I gave welcoming remarks to the White Cane Organization, which is an organization that supports those who are blind in our community. Um, uh, October 15th, uh, I attended the Greek Film Festival, uh, which was at the Sabre Cinema that happened all weekend, this is the first time that this, uh, film festival has made an appearance in our community, and I understand it's gonna be an annual event. That evening on Sunday, I was asked to greet our, the First Lady, Dr. Jill Biden, when she arrived at the Fort Lauderdale Airport, and, uh, very honored to, uh, have been able to welcome her along with others who, who attended the event. She was coming here to participate in a, uh, forum which took place yesterday morning on, uh, breast cancer.
Nova Southeast.
Was that Nova, yeah. Um, and then that same evening, I attended the dinner for the American Veterans for Equal Rights, which, uh, had their annual convention here in our community, and I was asked to speak and, uh, gave a, a speech in that regard. Now, the, the next week, as we all know, is the boat show, and, uh, there are many, many events regarding the boat show, um, and so, um, I just, you know, want to reiterate, we welcome the boat show, it's a wonderful opportunity to showcase who we are as a city, uh, and at the same time, it's a huge, huge economic driver for, for, for our area, not just for our area, but for the entire state, so anything we can do to preserve the, uh, the, the, the boat industry is important to us, and, uh, I'm gonna make every effort I can to participate in as many events as I can. On Thursday, I'm, uh, I was invited to the White House to attend a conference on building a better Florida, um, and, uh, that has to do with, um, initiatives that we are taking as a community to take advantage of the infrastructure money, um, uh, the tunnel will be one of the subjects of conversation as well as other infrastructure projects, um, and, uh, as we've discussed earlier, I had the opportunity to meet with, uh, the Secretary, Secretary Pete Buttigieg this afternoon, and, uh, and he's planning to, uh, continue our conversation when I get to Washington on Thursday. Imperial Point is having their Fall Harvest Festival, that's October 21st at 11:00 AM, I believe that's a Saturday morning, and that same day is the kickoff of the inaugural carnival at St. Jude's, uh, helping with the pronunciation, Keniah Catholic Church, uh, on 1105 Northwest Sixth Avenue. Um, a lot of other things, uh, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing. Day of the Dead Festival, November 4th, is gonna be at the, uh, Espinade Park at 6:00 PM, and, um, the Diwali Celebration is November 3rd at Oceanside Park, hope we can get as many people as possible there. The GLBX Ally Awards is on November 2nd at the Galleria Mall, lot going on, and unfortunately, um, we lost a wonderful person that we previously recognized in our community, uh, Jeannie, uh, lost, Dawson Lally, uh, there'll be a celebration of life for her at 2:00 PM at the Sanctuary Church, um, here in our community. So with that all being said, I welcome everybody from the commission to participate in the, uh, the, the mayor's reception for the boat show on October 25th, uh, if there's a question of, uh, of, uh, the ethic requirements, I think there's a charge of $45 to be able to attend that, um, and I think that's it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I add one thing?
You got one minute.
No, 10 seconds. We, uh, one other community, not the city, but countywide, uh, uh, Mr. Howard Foreman has passed, had passed away too, just recognizing that.
Okay, yes, Howard Foreman.
Former county-
Former county commissioner, former-
And everything.
Former Senator, former clerk of the court, just a great guy, very fun guy to be with.
Mr. Cliff Berry passed away.
Mr. City Manager, do you have any additional?
I just wanted to let you know that we've been shortlisted for the Prospect Lake Clean Water Center project as the best utilities project, um, next week I'll be attending the P3 award ceremony, uh, in expectation to perhaps win that award with Susan Grant and New York, and again, like you said, boat show starts next week, we'll be sharing road updates, uh, through our media channels, and, uh, also just, um, letting you know that we've been able to recover $612,504 from the fraud, and, uh, our law enforcement partners are, keep working, and we are very hot to get more money as well. Um, on November 2nd, DSD will have an open house and also a job fair at the DSD facility at 700 Northwest 19th Avenue, and, uh, starting on October 29th, uh, our customer service line will have live operators from 6:00 AM to 3:00 AM, between the hours of 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM, um, the greeters, uh, I'm sorry, callers will be greeted with a menu of options so that it can route to vacation rental hotline, public safety non-emergency line, or, um, or contact, um, our, our, um, water and sewer, uh, emergency line as well, other emergencies, we ask everyone to call 911. But those are just some updates, uh, letting you know what's taking place across the city.
Okay, great. Mr. Acting City Attorney?
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to serve you the last 10 months, um, I look forward to, um, I look forward to the transition to Mr. Ansbro, and, um, I'm sure we'll make a good team moving forward.
Great, thank you. When does Mr. Ansbro begin?
Uh, October 30.
October 30. Okay, there be no further business of the commission, the conference meeting is now concluded.